...to order. Hopefully, everyone has signed in. A few people didn't on Monday, so if you haven't, make sure you do. And would you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A couple pieces of business here. Dr. Weiner has asked me to note that there is a Burlington Community Health Fair coming up Saturday from 10:00 to 1:00 at the high school. And on another slightly more personal note, this town meeting is Chief Yetman's last town meeting. He's not crying like that. Ethan Gare, Nolan Woods, Bader Hakim, Sean Gallagher, and Navia Garg. Thank you for your help tonight. And on the microphones, they're turning them on and off up at the back, so they need to see that you have it and you're going to talk, and just wait a couple seconds and you don't have to whack it a couple times and poke it. It'll get turned on. Just wait a couple seconds. First order of business, I consider a motion to allow us to vote by hands instead of having to stand up. Second? All in favor? At least a couple. Thank you. All opposed? I would also consider a motion to name Frank Monaco deputy moderator should I not be able to continue tonight.
No move.
Second? All in favor? You can just raise your hand. There we go. Opposed? Here we go. And I would consider a motion to adjourn to Monday, May 20th, following the close of the special town meeting scheduled for Monday, May 20th at 7:30.
No move. Second?
All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Okay. That gets the noise out of the way. And we'll continue with where we were on Article 7. I believe we should be at Article 7-16. Marshall Simons Middle School Boiler Repair Under the Spending Authority of the School Committee, $125,000. Ways and Means?
Ways and Means, sorry, I'm not on the ball here yet. Ways and Means voted 12, 1, 0 for the boiler repair.
Thank you. Mr. Zabelotny?
I'm looking for where this is. 716, did you say?
7-16.
Page four.
7-16, and on my book says MMS Boiler Repair. It doesn't say... In any case, I know that we voted 7-0 for the Sewer Enterprise Fund because that's the most important part of our business here.
But how about for the boiler repair?
The boiler...
It's only the major articles.
The boiler repair was 7-0-0, but we do have a recommendation for the boiler repair, which has to do with, this is the second unit of a three-unit system on successive years that has failed. There is either a water or a metallurgical problem that probably you have to go back to the manufacturers for assistance to avoid this occurring next year or for early failure of these.
Okay, thank you. Questions on this warrant article?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct 1. I have no concept of what one of these things costs, but $125,000 for a repair seems like a lot of money. What does a new one cost?
Mr. Kuna, can you answer that?
Mr. Moderator. So, for example, in 2004, these three boilers cost $4.3 million.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Fix it.
Further questions? See none? Pull to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. CS for All Curriculum and Furniture Under the School Committee, $200,000. Ways and Means?
Ways and Means voted 12, 0, 0 to support this. I think probably the school department can do a better job of explaining the scope of it.
Okay. Capital Budget?
Budget voted 7, 0, 0 for this article.
Thank you. Does the school committee, or someone want to say what, tell us what this is?
Mr. Moderator. So, CS for All is a new state-run initiative that basically puts technology in the hands of middle schoolers. Right now, we've had a big push in Burlington. We've been thankful to have iPads, and we have a lot of support when it comes to technology. But the real push is making sure that younger students, and especially females, get more into the field of technology as well. So, this is going to take two rooms at the middle school, a room at the high school, do a conversion of those rooms, and put not only software, but hardware, furniture, and like I said, do a full conversion. We'll support the curriculum and our budgets going forward. This is really just a jumpstart to that program.
Thank you. Questions on that? See none? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 7-18. District-wide walkie-talkie under the Spending Authority of the School Committee, requested amount $105,000. Ways and Means?
Ways and Means voted 13, 0, 0 to support this. It improves the safety conditions and communications within the school department in all schools.
Thank you. Capital Budget?
Capital Budget voted 2, 4, and 5 against. This was an exercise in group dynamic. We've varied our positions, I think, and each of our positions changed two or three times in the course of discussing this. The problems that we settled on was originally there was a cosponsorship of a similar article, I believe it had earlier, by the police department, which is not present in this particular case. The ubiquitous presence of cell phones seems to be something that will do the same job, if not better. There is also the issue that we uncovered several other districts in the area are not contemplating and have not contemplated any similar systems. We just thought that this was something that was relatively redundant. And then there is the final issue of battery-operated equipment, which would be seldom used. It's a maintenance problem with, that generates a concern as to whether or not the equipment would be ready if and when they were, it was needed.
Dr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to ask Detective Fornier to come up. This is a, was a request and a joint request between the Burlington Police and the schools, and Detective Fornier can explain the safety aspects of this better than I.
Detective?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, the warrant is really broken up into two financial pieces. The first one is the $34,000 for, I think they're labeled as blue buttons in your warrant. They're really emergency buttons. And I don't know how many of you know, but we have, we have an overall safety plan in the schools. Probably the biggest part of that is we have actually emergency buttons, or some may say panic buttons, that allow us to get the student staff into lockdown by using a message system that plays over the overhead PA system when the button is pushed. The other piece of that is when somebody pushes one of those buttons, it goes directly over our police portable radios and it gets broadcast directly to the police station. So, our response times in getting to the schools, if we were to have one of those situations that we see around the country, we're able to respond very quickly. Cell phones in a lot of those cases go down. You know, we may get 911 calls in that same situation. Sometimes those are routed through another dispatch center that eventually get to us. So, for example, you know, I can tell you, if somebody were to use a cellphone in an emergency situation in a school, it's probably going to take two to three minutes for a police cruiser to get dispatched. This system, the minute that button is pushed, immediately we get a message over our portable radios, and any police officer in the school or in the vicinity can respond immediately to the school. So, we've already got that system in place. We're asking for a number of additional buttons to get a much wider latitude of coverage throughout the schools. So, you know, as you know, seeing these things around the country, you know, time is of the essence in these situations. And our whole security plan is based on getting kids into lockdown quickly and getting the police to the threat as quickly as possible. So, that's the $34,000 that we're asking for. The other 81 is for a radio system that will operate on its own frequency for each one of the schools. And the reason why that's important is a lot of our safety plan has to do with getting those kids into lockdown as quickly as possible. If we have a number of radios in the school, it's going to allow us to do that. Even when we don't go into lockdown, we sometimes can go into what we call lockout mode. That's when we keep the kids, you know, maintaining their regular school kind of environment. They don't go into a lockdown, but we recognize there could be a threat outside of the school. And in those situations, we would have people who have the radios in the schools that if they recognized any threat coming towards the school, they could put us into lockdown very quickly. So, I think we're asking for about 97 radios. 25 of those or so would be at the high school. I think we allocated about 16 for Marshall Simons, and then the other ones would be split up amongst the four elementary schools. There are some schools that do have their own portables, but those are not in a townwide system. So, this is going to allow us to put a repeater up on the Center Street Water Tower. We're going to be able to communicate police-wise directly to the schools. The schools will be able to communicate with each other. It's also important because part of our plan is when we evacuate one school to another school, we may be sending 800 or 1,000 kids someplace else. Those schools need to be able to communicate with each other quickly so they know what we're doing, and the police need to be able to communicate with the schools quickly. So, I think there's, there's a number of other towns that are actually going to a school-based radio system. I know talking with the vendor, he's, I think he told me he's doing four or five already this year. So, and you're going to see it throughout the country. It's just a need that, that we need to have, especially in an emergency situation.
Further questions? Ms. Willard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, Precinct 4. When I add up the amounts in the backup, it's $34,000 plus $61,000. That only brings me to $95,000. How do we get to 105?
Mr. Kuna?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Again, what you see there is for the actual price of materials, when this was actually put in place was close to a year ago, so there's a little bit of inflation built into that. And then also the numbers that were put in place were an estimate at the time, but we think that there's a few more that need to go into place, especially in the blue buttons and possibly a few more radios.
Yes, sir. Right here.
So, this bid is old, and you're just assuming that there's some inflation factor that goes along with it? Thank you.
No, I'm not assuming that the bid is old. When I say old, it was not completed yesterday. We actually start this process similar to the rest of the town where we do this around Christmas time. So, this quote was provided to us before Christmas. Since then, there is a change in the price of this, but these were submitted prior to that.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Webb, Precinct 7. Just worry a little bit about the maintenance on this, these systems or the system. And I see a projected lifetime of 10 years. That doesn't seem too encouraging. Do you have a comment on that? And the battery backup and so forth, are those going to be routinely checked every year and that sort of thing?
Well, I think the battery, there's a battery backup part of the, we already have the system in place, so I think the battery backup is that, I think that's part of the emergency button system. We have a battery backup on that. The portables, I think they're similar to our police portables. Actually, you know, I talked to the vendor a couple days ago, and we did try to be as price-conscious as we could with these. These are a smaller portable. For example, the Motorola portables that we use police-wise are about $250 more than these. So, he did price these out knowing that we would need quite a few of them, and they're very reliable portable. We've, we've actually gone from school to school and tested these using the repeater that the fire department has in the water tower to make sure that when we're at the furthest points away, we're able to communicate with each other in all the schools. But as far as the maintenance, I don't think they're any more or less than what we would use police-wise, and I know my portable doesn't require much maintenance, so.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Eileen. Ms. Sickler?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eileen Sickler, Precinct 4. So practically, how does that happen? Do the same people carry these around in the schools and all the time when they're there, and then when they're not there, they hand them off to somebody else, or?
Yeah, so we're going to have, we've already got, you know, I don't, I don't know if you want me to go through the whole list, but we've already got designated people in each school position-wise. So, obviously, if a position changed, that portable would be transferred. But yes, they would have them on all day long in the schools. And, you know, the schools will also use them just for routine, you know, communication within the school. So, they kind of have a twofold. The schools are able to use them, you know, on an everyday basis, and then, you know, really in an emergency basis, which, you know, we do have, we have medical emergencies all the time. We haven't had an evacuation luckily in a while, but I can tell you, you know, I've been here since 2002. We've probably had six or eight evacuations for different threats. And when you do that, if you don't have the right communication, you know, cell phones just really are not an option. I mean, that, that portable system allows you to communicate, for example, at the high school with 25 people at the same time. So, and the other big thing I can think, I can think of that I really want to stress everybody, we're all familiar unfortunately with the incident in Florida. There was somebody who saw the threat coming into that building. If they would have been able to communicate that over a portable radio and that school would have gone into lockdown, there's no doubt in my mind that we would have had a lot of those kids saved. So, that's a big component of it. If somebody sees a threat anywhere in the school, if we've got 25 of these portables scattered throughout the high school and a threat's happening in that area where somebody sees the threat and they come over that portable and announce it, we're going to be able to get into lockdown within seconds. Cell phones just don't accomplish that unfortunately, so.
Mr. Boyven?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, Precinct 1. I really like the idea of the blue button. You know, to me, I picture it like the emergency button at a bank or something. You hit it and the police show up, and they ask questions on the way. How do you plan to distribute those within the school system, and where would they be located? In individual classrooms or school administrators, or, you know, who would have the access to these blue buttons?
So, that's a good question. So, we've already, we already have a number at each of the schools. When we first came up with a system, we, we didn't want to go into it with, you know, a large amount of buttons. So, we do have, we have 11 at the high school. At our elementaries, we have about four each at the elementary and the middle school level. Unfortunately, that doesn't cover the entire building. So, you know, these buttons are in very discreet locations. We're going, we have some smaller buttons that we have in different locations where, that, that we're trying to kind of go with the bigger buttons because they're almost like, if you can picture a fire alarm pull station, they're covered by plastic. They're in areas that we obviously don't want kids to have access to. So, what we do is we put them in areas where people would have to go to put themselves in a lockdown so they can actually hit these buttons on the way. We don't want to put anybody in the way of the threat because they have to go push one of these that are out in a lobby or something like that. So, for example, at the high school, we have 11 now. We're trying to go to 25, and those are going to cover all of the areas that we don't presently have covered, which will be a lot of our upper corridors, our gym area and that kind of thing.
Mr. Dubey?
Ed Dubey, oh, sorry about that. Ed Dubey, Precinct 2. Is the only strategy that we have lockdown?
No, so if you guys, so without going to everything that we have, we have a lot of things, and I, and I can say this because I talked to other of my colleagues in other towns, we have a really great relationship with the school system. They have afforded us a lot of things that other schools don't, things that obviously we don't want to share with the public, but that's, you know, the lockdown is the main strategy to get the kids into an immediate safe place. As far as our police response and other things that we can bring to, to deal with that threat, we've got a lot of things in place that other schools don't that unfortunately I can't get into. But part of our emergency plan is we have a lockout plan, we have an evacuation plan, and we have a shelter in place plan as well. So, you know, for the purposes of tonight's article, it really deals with kind of our lockdown scenario, but we've got a lot of other safety and security procedures in place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Hanifin, Precinct 2. Just a couple of points that I'd like to make to add on to what Detective Fornier had said. Somebody mentioned, I think it was Ernie, mentioned cell phones being a possibility or how come we're not using cell phones? I unfortunately have a task with studying a lot of these issues, and there's been somewhere around 300 since 2000, since we've started studying these. And one of the problems with cell phones is it's a very fine motor skill, and if you understand stress at all, fine motor skills go out the window during stressful incidents. These radios are a gross motor skill. It's pressing a big button on the side and being able to talk to your colleagues and start a process in motion that might take 30 to 45 seconds if you're trying to dial a cellphone number or get your cellphone out, get through the, you know, the initial screen and all those things. So, there is some problems with that. The other aspect is, when you're talking about these situations, time is of the essence. Studying the time aspects is what they've unfortunately boiled the time down to is every 10 seconds during an active threat, particularly an active shooter situation, every 10 seconds accounts to another life or amounts to another life. And in that 10-second window, if it might take 20 seconds additional time to dial a cellphone versus pressing a button on the side of a radio or hitting a blue button that's on the wall to start the process in motion to get help there while these kids and teachers and things are trying to put themselves in lockdown, they don't have the tools that they need to defend themselves, we need to get the tools there, and that's what we, as the police department, have to do. So, to combine the efforts of the teachers, the administrators, and the police by shortening that window of time, however we can do it, and getting there as fast as we can is vital. When you combine all those things together, I think the other aspect is we really don't want to be worried about what other towns are doing. We want to be way ahead of the curve on this, and we try to pride ourselves in doing that here in town to stay way ahead of the safety curve in this particular area. Because I know I don't want to be asking or answering questions after the fact why we didn't do something differently, and I know Tom and the schools and the chief and everybody else is in the same boat, so just a little bit to add to it.
Any further questions on this article? Yes, Mr. Zabelotny. And then we'll get to Ms. Rollins.
I just wanted to point out that the presentation was extremely thorough, and had we had the opportunity to have the same presentation when we were having our discussion, it would have eliminated a great deal of our vacillation from 7, 0 to 0, 7 on the issue. It points out very well how a discussion of this nature is extremely useful and important, particularly if it has an adequate amount of information. You can always do with more, but to have the right information is appropriate.
Ms. Rollins, did you have a question?
All set, Mr. Moderator.
What was that? You're all set? All right. Any further questions? Is that up at the back? Can't see. Oh, okay. Pat, Ms. O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patricia O'Brien, Precinct 2. A question about the staff and their access to these, what is it? So, there's 52 that you're asking for, and there are how many in place already?
We have 11 at the high school. We have four at the middle school, and then I think we've got four each at the elementary schools. So, so think of it this way, not, not every teacher's going to have access to a button because of course they'll be in their classrooms, and we're not going to put, can't put a button in every classroom. What we're trying to do is cover areas of the building, and we're trying to put the button in a location that somebody is always present and that that person is not responsible for students. So, if you think of it, you know, not to get too, you know, technical, but if, you know, if a gunshot went off in one area of the building, of course, that whole area's going to hear it. Somebody in that area that doesn't have the responsibility of putting their kids into lockdown will have access to the button. And, and if they have a radio, even better. So, if they don't have access to a radio, we've got 25 radios in the school, that's going to give us a much better chance of getting those kids into lockdown quickly and getting that message over our portables. And I can't stress how important that is. If you guys actually saw that happen in real time, you'd be amazed at how quickly we're able to respond to the schools compared to a, you know, a police department that doesn't have that, that button. It comes directly over our portable. There's no, it doesn't have to be any communication with, you know, the front desk of the dispatch, and everybody knows what to do. We've, you know, we've got a great training staff at, at the police station. We train in this stuff all the time. We know exactly where we're going to respond when that message comes over. So, the buttons do that like, I can't think of any other system that would do a better job than, than what we have.
Sometimes these things happen in the classroom, and so my question really is, is how, what's the furthest distance a staff member might have to go to access this button? I guess I'm concerned that there might not be enough.
So, yeah, we, even if, we wouldn't want to put them in the classrooms. So, a teacher wouldn't necessarily be the one pushing the button. It would be somebody in that area. So, for example, we have department heads. We have department head offices that cover each area of the building. Without getting into specific locations of where the button is, there would be somebody in that area that would have access to the button. There would be somebody in that area that would have a radio if, if the warrant is approved. We also have a third way of putting our schools into lockdown that we're presently working on, and that's over our phone system. So, for example, a classroom teacher that had something happen right outside their classroom could go into their classroom, lock their door, put their students in lockdown, and communicate over our telephone system to put the, the rest of the school in lockdown. So, you really, you know, we're trying to base this on layers where if unfortunately one emergency system doesn't work or somebody's not able to get to it, we have a second and a third. Because as Lieutenant Hanifin said, you look at all of these school incidents, and time is the most important factor in any of them. And that's what we're really asking you for tonight, is to enhance our system so we can make sure that we get there as quickly as possible.
Pat Angelo, Precinct 5. Is the fire department hook, going to be hooked into the system too?
Is the fire department hook, going to be hooked into the system too? So, in case of an emergency, say like an explosion, where the fire department has to get there quickly, are they going to be tied into this too?
Well, they're not tied in. We use the buttons for a specific reason and that's because when they're pushed, we have a specific response. And, you know, I'm sure we could, there's a system out there that could handle that. I mean, that would be more of a 911, an emergency call. I mean, time is of course of the essence in that, you know, in any of those scenarios, an explosion or something like that, but we wouldn't use the button for that. The button is, these blue buttons are specifically for an active threat with a weapon in one of the schools.
Mr. Stam.
Steve Stam, Precinct Four. We processed and approved a article that for some of these buttons, I believe previously, correct? Okay. And the concept, as I remember it, was that the intercom would be used to alert the main office in the school and then the school would use the button to contact and whatever other communication would have to contact the, and discuss with the police. But the, all of the police would be alerted immediately upon pressing that button. What's wrong with that concept? Why can't we continue to use it?
So, we don't, when we have an emergency situation in the school, and of course unfortunately some of these start at the front desk or the front office where the PA system is or the intercom system is, this system goes out over the PA system. So, it's automatically sent over the PA system, the message for the kids to get into lockdown. So, it doesn't require somebody to physically go pick up the intercom and announce a lockdown. Most schools rely on that exact system. Now, think about it, you know, if you're familiar with any of these incidents around the country, we had Sandy Hook back in 2011. The front, the front desk was the area where the shooter came in. None of those people who had access to the intercom would have had the opportunity to put that school into lockdown and they didn't go into lockdown. The only reason they went into lockdown is unfortunately one of the phones fell off the hook and people could hear the commotion through the PA system. But most schools are relying on that and if somebody at the front desk has to flee, there's not going to be anybody left to put that school into lockdown. Where in our situation, we have all of these buttons where anybody that sees the threat, all they've got to do is push it. Nobody's got to go physically over to probably the one location that you can broadcast over the school PA to put the school in lockdown. So, it's a much more efficient system and it's a system that doesn't rely on a human actually picking up a phone, especially if, you know, that area's been compromised where the PA is.
Mr. Stam, Mr. Stam, your memory is correct, but for, I think Pine Glen in particular, the PA system was so old that the buttons wouldn't work through the PA system. So, the prior warrant, and I'm not sure if it was last year or the year before, was to replace the, the intercom system at Pine Glen because it needed to be replaced first of all, but I think also so the panic buttons would work through the, through the PA system.
Okay. Last, just a comment if I may, Mr. Moderator. I think, I mean, I would like to see some type of an evaluation of what we have at the schools, assuming we're going to need something more at some point in time that shows what we recommend and when we should do it as opposed to getting these in piecemeal. So, assuming that there's more and there probably is.
So, I think we have gone, we have myself, other members of the police department, we have gone systematically around to all of these schools at this point and I do believe that if this warrant passes, we will have enough coverage with these buttons that we will not be coming back to. And quite frankly, there's only certain locations we can put them in. So, there's, you know, we've kind of, we've kind of figured out in each school where those locations are and I think we pretty much have them covered tonight if this warrant article passes.
The question has been moved. Not debatable. All those in favor of moving the question? All those opposed? The question has been, has been moved successfully. Now, we will vote on the question. I won't mess it up this time. All those in favor of the article? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Moderator, again, I just want to especially thank you for supporting this article and I just want to highlight the importance of our partnership with the police. Chief Kent and Fire Chief Yetman, the first responders in town, really take this seriously. And if you want to know what keeps me up at night, it's not the test scores, it's these type of issues and they are just our incredible partners in helping us keep kids safe. So, Tom, thanks.
Okay. Article 7-19, Pine Glen Sewer Pump under the jurisdiction of the school committee for $14,000. Ways and Means.
Ways and Means voted 13-0-0. This sewer pump needs to be replaced to get the stuff out of the building.
Mr. Zabelotny. Capital Budget.
Capital Budget voted 7-0 and we take note that this was brought to our attention even though it's below our threshold and we were particularly, impressed is not the right word, but supportive of the notion of having a private contractor that's local attend to it.
Any questions on this? Nobody wants to talk about sewage? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 7-20, Project Adventure Course under the jurisdiction of the school committee, $116,000. Ways and Means. Mr. Riggs.
Ways and Means voted 13-0-0 to support the replacement of the RUBS course. It's highly technical and requires sort of careful installations used by, for gym and I think it probably has some other uses by the recreation department if this is approved. It may have, sorry, I shouldn't, not being certain. Thank you.
Mr. Zabelotny.
Capital Budget's reaction to this was 0-7 opposed, primarily because this was presented to us as something that would be of interest to athletically disinclined students. That came across to several of us as a possibility of safety issues and liability issues.
Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Project Adventure Course has been part of our physical education program at the high school, I believe, for about 40, 40 years. The courses used to be built in a natural setting, so the existing course was built sort of behind the band practice field in the woods there. We've had some storms over the last couple of years that have knocked down trees and the course is in disrepair. So, Project Adventure is going to, we hope with your support, build a new, basically outdoor classroom for Project Adventure. They no longer use trees. The high school's identified a spot where they will use telephone pole-like structures and the course is certified and inspected every year. The teachers are highly trained and it's one of the, I think, the most favorable activities, PE activities at the high school. And again, from what I've been told, it's been around for about 40 years and it just needs to be replaced.
Thank you. Questions on this? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 7-21, Pine Glen Room Renovation under the School Committee, $40,000. Ways and Means. Mr. Riggs.
Ways and Means voted 12-0-1 in support of renovating rooms at Pine Glen.
Thank you. Capital Budget.
Capital Budget voted 3-4 opposed to this particular request. Concerns here relate to the intentions in the not-too-distant future, if not next year, for a new school at Fox Hill that might not require the Pine Glen school to be, to continue to operate for very long. So, we just questioned the need for spending this level of money for something that might not be used for very long.
Dr. Conti, building a new school?
It's okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd love to build a couple of new schools, but right now the statement of interest that we have is for renovating the high school that we've submitted. We can only submit one statement of interest to the state every year. This is our eighth submission for the high school, so we've been turned down the prior seven years. And then we've been discussing with the school committee that if we're turned down again because enrollment pressure seems to be a priority of the state, and when this high school opened in 1972, my understanding is there are around 2,000 students in the building. We currently have about 1,000 students and again, but we, at the time, there wasn't B-CAD in one of the wings, there wasn't preschool, there wasn't the central office. So, we're occupying all the space in the building, but there's not really enrollment pressure from the state's perspective of students. So, if the state is not going to support renovating this building, where we are seeing enrollment pressure is at the elementary school. So, we'll probably change our statement of interest. Even if we were to do that successfully next year and the state gave us approval, that would, approval would come in December of '20. The state process after that takes about seven years before a new school's open. So, again, if everything goes ideally, we're probably eight, again, eight years away. And as I said, we've been trying to get state money for this high school for the last seven years, so we don't have any control over that and you don't get any points for trying. So, every year's a brand-new year, they don't care if you've applied seven years prior to that. Understanding Fox Hill and Pine Glen are, were open in the '60s, we have to continue to maintain and upgrade the buildings and this renovation money is going to allow us to create additional classroom. We have a growing student population, we have a particular program called a developmental skills classroom where we have a student population that is learning developmental skills. We have to open a fourth class. That program has grown from three students when it started about three or four years ago and we're going to have close to 30 students in that program this coming year and we need a fourth classroom space. So, a lot of this money, and again, Bob can get into the specifics, but a lot of this money is going to be for opening up a fourth classroom for the developmental skills program, which we will need in the immediate future and even if we were to build a new elementary school at Fox Hill, we would still need this room and this space.
Questions on this article? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 7-22, Fox Hill Room Renovation under the jurisdiction of the school committee, $25,000. Ways and Means. Mr. Riggs.
Ways and Means voted 12-0-1 in favor of this renovation at Fox Hill.
Capital Budget. Mr. Zabelotny.
Capital Budget voted 6-1 for this article and if you're wondering the lack of consistency for the previous one to this one, one of our members arbitrarily set $25,000 as a, as a level of renovation that would be allowed even if there weren't going to be new schools within 10 years.
Okay. Dr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Argument is very similar to the Pine Glen argument except at Fox Hill, my understanding is are these renovations are going to be for office spaces. So, the way the pods are designed, there's a lot of open spaces in the snowflake pod area. I can't believe I'm describing a school like that, but that's Fox Hill. And so, we've been using glass partitions to create office spaces. The office spaces are needed for individual services like speech pathology and supporting students individually and having some of the meetings and confidential conversations that have to take place. So, we're running out of space at our elementary schools.
Questions on this article? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 7-23, Francis Wyman Bathrooms under the jurisdiction of the school committee, $140,000. Ways and Means. Mr. Riggs.
Ways and Means voted 13-0-0 in favor of renovating bathrooms at Francis Wyman.
Capital Budget.
Capital Budget voted 7-0.
You have to stand up so they know that they can turn it on. Sorry, Ernie. Maybe you just wave your hand.
We voted 7-0 for this, for the bathrooms.
Thank you. Questions on this article? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 7-24, Francis Wyman Air Conditioning Phase III under the jurisdiction of the school committee, $225,000. Mr. Riggs. Ways and Means.
Ways and Means voted 13-0-0. I believe this is the third and last phase of air conditioning for Francis Wyman.
Capital Budget. Mr. Zabelotny.
Capital Budget voted 7-0-0 for this article and we heartily endorse the idea of using heat pumps so that it would be a more efficient system, excuse me.
Are there questions on this warrant article? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 7-25, BHS Vinyl Flooring Replacement under the School Committee, $50,000. Mr. Riggs. Ways and Means vote?
Ways and Means voted 13-0-0 to support various flooring replacements in the high school. There's a lot of it's deteriorating and places it's become a safety hazard.
Capital Budget. Mr. Zabelotny.
Capital Budget voted 7-0-0, primarily a safety issue from our point of view.
Any questions on this article? Seeing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. 7-26, BHS Computer Lab under the School Committee, $33,000. Mr. Riggs. Ways and Means.
Ways and Means voted 13-0-0 to support the computer lab updates. I believe this is for the art department.
Capital Budget. Mr. Zabelotny.
Capital Budget voted 7-0-0 for this article.
Any questions on this article? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 7-27, Marshall Simon's Middle School Cafeteria Tables under the School Committee, $65,000. Mr. Riggs. Ways and Means vote?
Ways and Means voted 13-0-0 to replace cafeteria tables that were original, well, not original, they were not replaced when the school was renovated several years ago. They're sorely in need of it to improve traffic flow and flexibility.
Mr. Zabelotny. Capital Budget vote?
Capital Budget voted 7-0-0 for this article. It's, we agree that the tables need an upgrade. One can argue that there's a health issue with some of them. On the other hand, they seem to be in better condition than some of the tables that are used, for example, in voting at the high school. So, one would hope that the better of these would be salvaged for use elsewhere.
Take note, Amy, okay?
Yep, new tables.
Any questions? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Seven dash twenty-eight. Francis Wyman Library Furniture Under the School Committee, eighty-two thousand dollars. Mr. Riggs.
Ways and Means voted thirteen zero zero to replace, and upgrade library furniture, also to make the library spaces more useful and more flexible.
Mr. Zabelotny, Capital Budget?
Seven zero zero to support this.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Seven dash twenty-nine. Memorial Interior Painting Under the School Committee, forty thousand dollars. Mr. Riggs.
Ways and Means voted thirteen zero to support interior painting at Memorial.
Mr. Zabelotny, Capital Budget?
Did you say thirty-five thousand?
I said forty.
Capital Budget Committee had a problem with this and the following article. We're not opposed to painting. A quick walkthrough through the school indicates that this is the kind of thing that you'd like to do to reduce maintenance costs, because doing it a little bit earlier rather than later. On, on the other hand, we look at this as a item that really should be part of the operating budget, not a capital budget, because there isn't any definition of the number of square feet of being painted, or who's going to be doing the painting, et cetera. We understand that there's an effort to have this as summer school employment options, et cetera, but we still don't really have a good idea of just how much paint is going to be used, and how much wall area and trim area is going to be covered. There needs to be a better way of, of looking at money being expensed for this kind of purpose. Otherwise, it has the look of a slush fund.
Any questions on this article? Mr. Gerard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Gerard, Precinct Five. Is this something that the facilities can do, or the custodian staff can do periodically, as opposed to having to do it, you know, with the forty thousand dollars?
Mr. Kuna.
Mr. Moderator, thank you. Hello? Okay. So, it was addressed that, would this be in our operating budget? And I will get to your question in one quick second. So we do carry about six thousand dollars for materials and paint in our operating budget. What this does is allows us to buy painting materials, not just one time. And that six thousand dollars that we have in our budget is kind of small when we have the square footage that we have, close to a million square foot in all of our buildings. So what we've done is we've mimicked previous warrant articles where we've asked for this money, and we're allowed to draw off it and paint larger areas over time. So this may not be a one-year project, and will take actually more than one year. But what we will do is we'll have the summer help, we'll have our custodians doing this work, and what you're looking at right now is actually just materials and supplies, not labor.
Okay, so that answers my question. I didn't know if this was contractors or just supplies. Thank you.
Anything additional? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Seven dash thirty. Marshall Simon's Interior Painting Under the School Committee, forty thousand dollars. Mr. Riggs, Ways and Means.
Ways and Means also voted thirteen zero zero in favor of Marshall Simon's Interior Painting.
Mr. Zabelotny, Capital Budget?
As with the previous article, we did not vote on it for the same reasons as stated previously.
Okay. Questions on this? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, seven dash thirty-one. Under the DPW, Sewer Pump Station Rehabilitation Spending Authority Selectmen, fifty thousand dollars. Mr. Riggs.
Ways and Means voted eleven zero zero to fund sewer pump rehabilitation from the Sewer Enterprise Fund. This is sort of a, funds ongoing maintenance of all those pump stations in town. I don't remember the exact number, but there's probably more than a dozen.
Mr. Zabelotny.
Capital Budget voted seven zero zero for this article.
Thank you. Is there a selectman vote?
Mr. Moderator, the selectman voted five zero zero for this.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now we've, we've gone through all the pieces of Article Seven, which actually brings us back to the main motion, which has it all lumped together as one price tag, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of two million eight-hundred ninety-four thousand eight-hundred twenty-three dollars and fifty thousand dollars from the Sewer Enterprise Fund for the items contained within the following proposed twenty, fiscal year twenty-twenty capital budget, seeming to be expended under the appropriate authorities as indicated. Which we've already passed. Any questions? All those in favor of what you've already voted for? All those opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Article Eight. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate. Let me get the, let me get the right article in front of me. See if the town will vote to transfer from overlay surplus to sum of three hundred eighty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the purchase of an ambulance. Mr. Riggs, Ways and Means.
Ways and Means voted twelve zero one to support transferring money from the overlay surplus for a new first-line ambulance. Department probably do a better job of explaining exactly the sequence of events with ambulances on that.
Mr. Zabelotny, Capital Budget?
Capital Budget voted six zero zero for this article. It's worthy, it's important to note that the revenue from ambulance operations exceeds this by factor of three, the annual revenue.
Other questions on this article? Ms. Angelo.
Pat Angelo, Precinct Five. Have any of the big businesses or contractors in town been approached about contributing either toward this ambulance or towards some of the other equipment? I mean, the new fire station was of necessity because of all of the development down in that area. So have they approached, or have any of them volunteered to contribute toward it?
Mr. Sagarino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mrs. Angelo, we have not approached any businesses to purchase the ambulance. We do get some, some grants and donations from many of the businesses in town for public safety on an annual basis, though.
Are there any additional questions? You know, Chief Yetman's here for the last time. You gonna let him off easy? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, Chief. There goes your moment in the sun. Article Nine. See if the town will vote to transfer the sum of one million dollars from free cash for the purpose of funding water main upgrade slash replacement, seeming to be spent under the direction of the town administrator. Mr. Riggs, Ways and Means?
Ways and Means voted eleven zero zero in favor. Water main replacement is something that we do periodically. I actually think there's a warrant article every year, every other year. It can be bonded, but this year, we had sufficient free cash to, to do the transfer out of free cash and save room in the bond schedule for other big projects.
Mrs. Zabelotny.
Capital Budget voted seven zero zero for this article.
Thank you. A vote of the selectmen?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Selectmen voted five zero zero in favor.
Thank you. Questions on water main upgrades? Seeing none, we'll vote, put it to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article Ten. To see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of one million one-hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the Burlington Mall Road ornamental streetlight upgrade project, seeming to be spent under the direction of the town administrator. Mr. Riggs.
Ways and Means voted eleven zero zero to support this item from free cash. The, as in mentioned, the backup, over several past years, various businesses along Mall Road have been included upgrades to, to the parts of Mall Road in front of their properties when the upgrades were done. But it doesn't look like a lot of that is, will be forthcoming to complete the job. So the town proposes, or it's proposed to fund replacement of the streetlights, Eric, sorry, upgrading them and replacing them.
Mr. Zabelotny, Capital Budget?
This article escaped our attention. Had we known about it, we would probably have asked more than a few questions, but we did not.
Questions on this article from the body? Mr. Glance. That is Mr. Glance, isn't it? Did I get it right tonight, Nolan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nolan Glance, Precinct One. I've got a, a couple of questions. So, if I'm reading the backup right, some work has been done by donation or contribution from local businesses. I'd like a, I guess a summary of how much has been spent so far by them. And I work over there, and I'm thinking we can get, whether it's the, the tenants of those locations, or the landlords of those locations to step up. And, you know, if not, I'm not sure this is a great investment. So I'd like to hear a little more about that. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes.
Mr. Moderator. This is a, a long, long, long-term project, or a long, um, project that was envisioned back by Bob Mercier to beautify the Mall Road. The, um, the lights on the Mall Road, which Bob used to call the, um, the, uh, million-dollar-a-mile, the war of the world lights, because they were those big old lights, and they hung over the Cobra heads. And he thought this, the Mall Road was, um, it was a showpiece. That's where, you know, all our biggest businesses are, and the Leahy and everything. So it was something that was high on his agenda. And so we did, I don't know, probably ten, twelve years ago, we did a pilot project down at Mall Road and South Bedford Street. We put up three of these lights. We had a, a committee, and they selected the top hat lights and the LED, and they're efficient, and they have the, the nice fluid poles. And we wanted to try to entice the businesses to contribute and help us. And the district was generous enough to build a big portion of that. And then Leahy got on board, and they, they continued the string up as far as the Leahy entrance. But I, I think we're pretty much out. There's not a lot of development happening beyond South Bedford. So we thought it was time. It was, it's, lights have to be replaced. If you go out there now, you'll see wires strung light to light, because the underground wiring was all direct burial. A lot of it is, is shot. So, you know, at some point in time, we're gonna have to invest in the infrastructure. So this is, I think, a good opportunity. It's gonna really make the Mall Road look that much better. They're, they're all energy-efficient lights, they're all LEDs, and, you know, we think it's time.
Ms. Byer.
Thank you. Kathy Byer, Precinct Two. The zoning bylaw review committee had a presentation a few weeks ago regarding 5G, and what that's going to be doing to our light poles and others being replicated through the town. And so I am wondering how that is going to impact this particular part of the development.
Mr. Sagarino.
Thank you, Mrs., Mr. Moderator. We have had, been reached out to by several of the cellular companies that are interested in locating their equipment on structures such as these. So we, we don't have anything definitive at this point, but we have a couple of meetings scheduled in the upcoming weeks.
Mr. Gilley.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Kelly, Precinct Six. I believe, I'm not sure how many years ago, but when Bob Mercier was town administrator, he'd get up in front of us and, and ask for fifty thousand dollars, I believe was the amount, if my memory serves me correct, for those of you that might remember, to have some sort of a, a study to replace the lights and to improve Mall Road, getting the businesses to contribute towards redoing that. And I'm just wondering, it just seems like now, this amount of money is being burdened by the entire taxpayers of the town, as opposed to having some of the businesses contribute. Now, I know, Paul, you said that, um, well, I call it New England Executive Park still, but it's the district, excuse me. But I'm just wondering, are, are we gonna get some more help from some of the businesses? Has, has that whole situation fallen apart, or are we gonna move forward and get some help?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom, from what we can see, and based upon the amount of time that has expired, most of those were part of when a project was being redeveloped along that stretch. We don't feel as though that there are any opportunities for large-scale redevelopments, other than maybe down near the mall, to, to help out down there. And I think the warrant article that you're referring to, we, we were looking at to determine how much hardscaping, we were looking at different options for sort of the median strip at that time. I think that's the warrant article you were remembering. And what we found out, that anything other than the, the basic was extremely expensive, and was something that we weren't going to be able to do in terms of the actual median strip, you know, making it more attractive. So I think that is the warrant, warrant article that you were thinking about from, from a long time ago.
Further questions? Mrs. Nash.
Mildred Nash, Precinct Three. I don't, haven't heard anything tonight, and I'm not sure that we have a townwide policy, but would these lights be environmentally sensitive in regard to light pollution and so forth? There would be.
Mr. Sagarino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, Mr. Hayes has nodded that, yes, there would be.
I saw that. Thank you.
Mr. Frost.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Matt Frost, Precinct Three. Would this have a positive impact on the commercial tax assessed values of those businesses? And if so, is there an estimate of, of what that would be, and maybe the pay, there'd be a payback of this investment?
Mr. Sagarino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Matt, I don't, I don't think that we would be able to tie improved streetlights to, to the property owner's values, but clearly, there is a value to the attractiveness of any street, I would say.
Thank you.
Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Murphy, Precinct Five. I'm speaking of the medians, because that's what I remember, too, that, that article from years ago. How does this tie in with that? It looks like some of the medians have been sort of dug up and made to look a little bit nicer, but is that, is spending money on that part of this, or is that completely separate?
Mr. Sagarino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. That, that would be separate. I think in some, most of the sections, we've gone with sort of grass. Again, going back to the cost of trying to do anything but that was, was really extraordinarily expensive. I think we're all blown away, blown about, blown away by the cost at the time. So I think it's gonna be fairly simple on the median strips themselves.
Mr. Tigas, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Tigas, precinct six. I guess this is for Mr. Sagarino. Would this, this is kind of assuming that we adopt the stretch energy code. Would this count towards compliance with the stretch energy code and therefore improve our chances for future grants from the program?
Mr. Sagarino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, on the later warrant article, you'll be, we'll be asking you to approve the stretch building code, which will allow us to enter the Green Communities Program. One of the goals of that is to increase our energy efficiency by, I believe, about twenty percent. And the streetlights project that we did townwide with the LEDs will count towards that if we're able to get into the program. So we will, it will count towards our energy efficiency goals as associated with that.
Further questions? Is that Ms. Warren?
Chris Warren, precinct four. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would like to know for this capital improvement, why it's the only one that has not been vetted by the capital budget committee, in addition to the Ways and Means Committee, as has been the case for the others?
Mr. Sagarino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I don't have, I don't have an answer for that. I don't know why, why we missed it.
Is that Mr. Boyven?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bill Boyven, precinct one. As you all know, this is a major roadway in town. And I think from one end to the other, it is important that it be consistent, attractive, functional, and inviting. It's important, I think, to generating pride in the community. And the businesses and commercial aspects, you know, as you well know, pay over sixty percent of the taxes in this town. So they are certainly funding it if we pay for it from this pool of money.
Mr. Glance?
Thank you, Nolan Glance, precinct one. So you mentioned that part of this is prompted by the fact that the infrastructure is in need of repair slash replacement. And it sounds like part of it is to upgrade and make them look nicer, kind of like the ornamental aspect of it. Is there a scaled-back version that we could do for less cost that would be ongoing, still energy efficient, but perhaps lower budget if we're not going to get commercial funding? I just have a hard time believing that RJ Kelly and the other landlords up and down that street are not stepping up here. It's, like I said, I work there, I go there every day. Doesn't bother me that much. It's a lot of money, so I'm, you know, I kind of want to balance it. Usually, I'm in favor of these kind of things, but having a hard time that this is not more economical in some fashion. So can you elaborate?
Mr. Sagarino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nolan, I think we thought about that a lot. And this project, if we're unable to do it all at once, we will do it piecemeal, little, little, little bit every year. So it'll just be, we'll lose some efficiencies by not being able to purchase everything at once and have the contract bid at once. But we will continue on, do this little section at a time, until we make our way all the way down. But like I say, from our experience, and sort of waiting on this for probably ten years now for additional help to come forward, we feel like we're sort of at the end of the road. And it's, at this point in time, we want to start chipping away at it at a minimum.
Ms. Willard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, precinct four. Mr. Sagarino, will this be, will we have ornamental lighting the full length of the Mall Road when this is, for this amount of money? Or is, when you say piecemeal, it sounds as if you're going to do a block at a time. And if this will cover, you know, from Cambridge Street to Middlesex Turnpike, I think that's a worthwhile venture.
Mr. Sagarino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. If you allow us to, we'll do the whole thing at once. If we're unable to get this funding approved this evening, we will continue on with a piecemeal project, probably over the next ten years. And again, it's not just the lights, it's all the underground infrastructure that connects all the poles as well.
Mr. Sinessi?
Adam Sinessi, precinct one. I'd like to speak as a member of the capital budget committee. And I find it offensive that you're coming to us with a million-dollar project, within the title that says ornamental. And the fact that it didn't come in front of capital budget, that just kind of fell off the table and was lost on people? That's disgraceful. There's a process that we follow. We expect the process to be followed. Come back at a future town meeting with this, please. I urge everyone to vote this down. If you respect the process that we work off of in this town, you vote this down.
Mr. Connors?
Adam, I respectfully disagree. You've had that warrant for at least two weeks. You guys could have gotten together at any point. You guys should have realized that that was in there.
Any further comments on this? Ms. Rollins?
Thank you, Mr. Ma, I have a cold. This is going to be fun. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sonia Rollins, precinct six. Folks, I would ask you to think about some of the things that DPW has presented to you and what the town administrator has said, which is, it's an investment in the infrastructure of the town. While I can appreciate people are asking what the business community has done, I think a gentleman before me had mentioned what they pay in the tax base. I will also tell you, they have worked on parts of Mall Road and have invested into parts of Mall Road. I think we hear ourselves talk about this a lot. I know I've certainly said it before. If we are asking businesses to improve, we had this discussion during the sidewalks, and to invest in the community, we as a community as well should be investing in our infrastructure. Mall Road's project has been something we've been talking about for years. Bob Mercier spoke of it. We are speaking of it still. This is something that does not make sense to continue to piecemeal. I think it's a very thorough project. When you go through budgeting and you realize, you ask the department heads to come before you with what they believe is important for that, for this budget season. They, DPW looks at what they have, the town side looks at what they have to spend, and they have come before you to tell you that this is an investment of Mall Road. Mall Road continues to be one of our main roadways, something that I think we're all proud of. It does absolutely have businesses on both sides of it that continue to give us a lot of funding, both in the tax base and with donations. I would ask you to look beyond this and understand that you're making an investment in the infrastructure. And paring it back and not doing ornamental will half, will offset the street, because some have already been started. So I ask you to think about the concept of investing in the community and investing in a roadway that is bringing us in millions. This is something that we should be proud of, and we should be investing in along with our business partners. Thank you.
Ms. Warren?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Warren, precinct four. I agree with everything that Sonia just said. But I would request that we postpone this to September, to have the capital budget committee have a chance to weigh in. I relied heavily on the twelve-page capital budget report that came out, I believe, on May first. And I would have liked to have had this included in that report. Thank you.
So you're making a motion to postpone?
Motion to postpone it, yes.
Discussion on postponing this? Ms. Tarpe Clement?
Terry Tarpe Clement. I have to agree with Sean. I'm sorry, but, you know, I sit here every town meeting, and I listen to people ask questions, and ask the questions over and over again. The people are accessible to town meeting members that are doing the work in this town. And for us to get this paperwork and to have a question asked, that one is in the backup, and that two, you could have picked up a phone instead of having a four-hour conversation about it and asked somebody and gotten your answer. I just, I find it disgusting. You know, we're supposed to be here to do a service to the town also. Well, why don't we start doing the service? Read your backup, read your warrant articles, and come prepared. And as far as, you know, the, things do happen, an oversight that it was in the capital budget, but we have so many capital budget people here, nobody noticed it, as Sean said, two weeks ago? I don't think we should postpone it. Thank you.
Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just clarification from the DPW to the town meeting members in whether or not this will contribute to your debate that you're having right now or not. We typically meet with the capital committee well in advance of actually submitting warrants for town meeting. And when they meet well in advance, sometimes as early as January, I get calls from Ernie, and we gather up, and we go through the entire ten-year plan. And evidently, we missed this article. We did talk about stuff that is not even in the warrant that you'll see this year, probably unless you for another two or three years. But we do a thorough review with them. And somehow, and I'll take the blame for it, I'm in charge of the department, I meet with them, we missed this article, you know. Had I known that we missed it, we would have asked for another meeting. And we're not afraid of meeting with any committees as we do. But I just wanted to clarify the issue and how that actually happens. It's not like we go through the warrant, and we're going to say, oh, we're going to skip this one. It just so happens that we do meet. And I think we did it like two weeks in advance. Am I right? I mean, two months in advance? Yeah, two months, so. Thank you.
Mr. Sax?
John Sax, precinct seven. It strikes me that we're hearing a couple of things. One is that a lot of these lights need to be replaced. Well, if lights need to be replaced, clearly it has to be done. I think what sticks in people's craw is the idea of a million dollars. It's the word ornamental. I think it's pretty clear that that's what's bothering people. We're going to spend a million dollars on Mall Road where the millionaires live. I would say let's postpone it to September. And one of the things that DPW can do is come back and say, okay, it would cost this much to put in garden variety everyday lights, and this is how much more it's costing for the ornamental. Because I think the ornamental is the part that's bugging people. If you said to us, we got to replace the lights for a million dollars, I don't think there would be any discussion. This would have ended twenty minutes ago. It's about the word ornamental. And if by September, you can come back and explain it better, then I think it'll get passed.
For anybody else, except Mr. Sinessi, he's already had one turn. Mr. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roger Bell, precinct six. The work that's already been accomplished on the road in terms of the existing lighting, is that already ornamental lighting?
Mr. Sagarino?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes.
All right. So the money that you're asking for is just a continuation to finish the project that's already in process. How much of it, of the whole road, do you know what percentage is, has already been completed?
Let him finish, please, Ms. O'Brien. I hope, I'm sure he'll get to it.
Percentage-wise, it's probably a little less than half. We have lights from Lexington Street up as far as South Bedford Street, pretty much complete. And there's a little bit of gap in there. So what has to be done is from Cambridge down to South Bedford. That's, you know, down by the Mary and stuff, that's not done. And then on the other end, from Lexington Street towards Middlesex Turnpike. And there may be a couple of lights in the between in front of Leahy that have to be replaced as well.
How much has been spent by the business community already?
Mr. Bell, let's get to the postponement. You can get back to the main article once we've decided whether to postpone or not.
Personally, I think we should just go ahead with this at the time. I think capital budget has already seen that this has been a part of it and could have done something in the meantime. They've had time to go through the warrant articles in the meantime. So I'm in favor of going forward with this.
Thank you. Mrs. Byer? Adam, you already had one chance. Everyone else? Everyone else? Everyone else? Mr. Sinessi, you are out of order. You have had one opportunity to speak on this article. Now, other people get a chance, and then, then you can get, then you can get another chance. Keep your, keep your pants on. Mrs. Byer?
Kathy? Kathy Byer, precinct two. I understand Mr. Sinessi's outrage at not having this presented to both committees. I can also look at this article and see that summertime is when work gets done. And that corridor along Mall Road is really a wonderful gateway and statement about our town. And I can see going ahead on this article with what I know right now and being able to have a vote. I think that I would expect the fact that this didn't make it before the committees is going to cause enough embarrassment to the town to make sure that this doesn't happen again. But I would vote for moving forward on this article, rather than postponing, so that the town has the summer to be able to get work done. Thank you.
Ms. Nash, something on postponement?
Mildred Nash, precinct three. Perhaps as a postponement that isn't to September, because I can understand the outrage of not having followed the protocol, would it be possible for the capital budget committee to have a meeting between now and next week and bring this back at the Monday or Wednesday session? And then we could be doing it in this town meeting, and they would have had their chance to report, because this is a large item. And if we make the exception once, the rules tend to weaken and eventually disappear. Is that a possibility?
Mr. Zabelotny, can your, can your committee meet in dispossessed? Is that a yes?
Was that a yes?
That was a yes.
Sounds like a plan to me.
So we need a motion to postpone this until Monday. Do I hear one? Any discussion? Chris, could you, Christine, could you withdraw your motion, please? Withdrawn, thank you. Okay. Now, we have a motion to postpone until Monday. Okay, end of the warrant. I'm easy. Okay, end of the warrant, we'll bring this one up. All those, any discussion on it? Mr. Boy, oh, that's Mr. Marchese?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for recognizing me. I appreciate it. Steve Marchese, precinct three. As a little additional information, and I don't know how many people in the room, is it possible, when this comes back forward, we can get a thorough presentation from the town administrator, exactly what's going to be going on down the Mall Road, quote-unquote, what this beautification committee, or beautification is going to entail? The reason why I'm asking is, is that I understand the word ornamental is, is a big word in that presentation. And you want to beautify the corridor. But living in town as long as I have and seeing what's happened to that Mall Road, where we've had all different types of material in those center islands, concrete, then the concrete gets all ripped up, then we had some stone in there. And now, as we're driving down, I'm seeing loam with a hydro seed. And my question becomes is, if we put a nice paint job with brand-new lights on that Mall Road, and then?
Steve, we're talking about postponing.
I understand that. What I'm asking you, Mr. Moderator, please, is to, if, can we get a full presentation of what this thing's going to look like in the end, please?
Yes, we can ask the town administrator to do that for us.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I'm trying to figure out. Thank you.
Not a problem. Okay. All those in favor of postponing until the end of the warrant? Okay, all those in favor of postponing until the end of the warrant? All those opposed? Motion is to postpone passes. Thank you, Mrs. Nash, for your suggestion. Article 11 has changed a little bit from what's printed in the warrant, so I will have to read this. Article 11 is for DPW Recreation Facility Phase 2. It is hereby requested that Article 11 be moved as follows, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $15,500,000 for the purposes, purpose of designing, constructing, equipping, and furnishing a Department of Public Works and Recreational Department facility, including all engineering, construction management, legal and fees, and costs related and incidental thereto. And to meet said appropriation, authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow said sum pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with General Law, Chapter 44, Paragraph 20, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay back such costs by like amount same to be spent, and that said amount above to be spent under the direction of the town administrator. Phew. Okay.
Can you read that?
Mr. Riggs, Ways and Means vote on this.
Ways and Means voted 12-0-0 to authorize this amount earlier than expected.
Thank you. Capitol Budget.
Capitol Budget voted 7-0-0 for this article and we'd like to commend the administration and also the team that tried to consolidate the contracts to, in order to save money on the design phase.
Vote of the Selectmen? Mr. Priest.
Selectmen voted 5-0-0 in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Sagorino, do you have anything you wish to say on this, or Mr. Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, thank you again for the vote last year to proceed with the design and construction of the facilities for the DPW and the recreation. Just to give you a little bit of a history of what we did last year, and we did put a sheet in the back of the hall on Monday, sort of like explaining what we're trying to do here. What you voted last year was to actually approve the two facilities that we're gonna have, both what is known as Clacken Reed and the current highway division. So, you voted to proceed with the design of the two facilities, because there's a lot of commingling of where people are gonna end up and how one facility doesn't work without the other, so we agreed that we're gonna proceed with the design of both facilities. Design and construction of replacements for the fuel pumps that we have behind the town hall annex, and also construction of what we've been calling Phase 1, which is the site up at what is formerly known as Clacken Reed. We also said to you last year that in two or three years, we're gonna come back to us for fifteen and a half million dollars for, sorry, sixteen and a half million for the second part of this phase. During the design process, and a committee was established, you got an update from Mr. Petron and General and that, but we have gone through the design process and different alternatives, and it was presented to us by both our design engineer and the OPM company that there are potential savings to the town if rather than going in two separate bits at two separate times, if we were able to combine the project into one, and so used to one bid, there will be savings actually on their services that provides to the town. We'll take some money from their end as well, but there will be a lot more savings when it comes to the construction part, whether or not they're buying HVAC equipment, whether or not they're buying roof equipment, anything like that, it'll be just one price for the contractor. What it means to us is that we'll accelerate the project slightly, you know, as opposed to coming in next year asking you for money so we can proceed the following year, maybe we'll gain one year in construction, but the biggest advantage of it is that the both companies, again, the design engineer and the OPM, came up that there is a potential to savings of about a million dollars on the contract altogether. So, the committee that is overviewing the design of the facilities unanimously supported the project, I believe Ways and Means did as well, as well as the Capitol Committee because of the potential savings. And then I'll answer one question that you may have right now, is that, well, if we're saving a million dollars, why are we still asking for the same amount? And this is, there's a lot of unknown in the construction business right now, even last year as well. When we started this project and we asked for the $32 million, those estimates were put together at the end of 2017. We're now at 19 and we're just designing the project. Since then, tariffs were imposed to some of, China specifically, that have raised the cost of construction, and most recently, we all seen that, I think, 25% tariffs, and we know that those will impact the cost of construction, we don't know to what level, but this is why we wanna leave the number as we have it, because the only way we can award a contract is by having the full amount authorized by town meeting. So, if we were to take $1 million off of this cost and go out to bid and then we're short even $50,000, we cannot sign the contract and proceed with construction. This is why we're asking you to support this tonight, so we can proceed with our permitting and hopefully in the fall break ground and proceed with Phase 1 and then a year and a half later, we face deal this project. Thank you.
Questions from the body? Ms. Willard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, Precinct 4. Is this a bonding question? Do we need to, is this, does it require a two-thirds vote? And second, I have a recollection that the total cost of the project was going to be some $32 million. Can you tell us, is that still true? Thank you.
Two-thirds on the vote?
Yes.
So, that's the first part of the, two-thirds of vote is required. And yes, it's $32 million and we're still maintaining the same estimate through today. Total.
Sorry, I had a question. Seeing none? We'll put it to a vote. This is a two-thirds. All those in favor? Moderator declares it's a two-thirds vote in favor, so this article passes. Article 12. It's hereby requested that Article 12 be moved as printed in the warrant, to see if the town will accept money. Mr. Riggs, Ways and Means?
Ways and Means took a quick vote to accept money, 13-0-0.
That's...
It's only a million dollars something, but take it anyway.
Capitol Budget have a vote on this, Mr. Zabelotny? No? Questions on this?
It wasn't.
Seeing none? All those in favor?
$1,007,66.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, you're right. It wasn't printed.
Frank Monaco, Precinct 4, thank you. I just wanna make sure we don't get hung up on how we voted this. You said it's printed in the warrant, but there's no amount in the warrant. So, the main motion was for an amount to accept, am I correct?
We're accepting all money, whatever the amount is.
Whatever it is. Hmm, okay, thank you. You can do that?
I believe so.
We just did. Thank you.
I will accept any money in any amount, Frank, so I don't know why the town wouldn't. I believe this is a change we made at some point in the last year because we don't know what the number is from the state. Article 13. It's hereby requested that Article 13 be moved as printed in the warrant, to transfer money from the Sewer Inflow and Infiltration Fund. Ways and Means?
Ways and Means voted 13-0-0 to transfer $69,515 to pay for INI, to pay the debt on INI loans.
Vote of the Selectmen?
Selectmen voted 4-0-0 in favor.
You know, I neglected, I didn't mean to neglect the Selectmen to ask if they wanted to accept the Chapter 90 money. I assume they did.
Not a problem, Mr. Moderator. It was 4-0-0 in favor.
Thank you.
We're offended of accepting money.
Questions on Article 13? Ms. Damiani? No, you don't have to ask a question, I don't mind.
Since you went, since you went back to the Board of Selectmen regarding the vote on Article 12, in the backup, it indicates that the Chapter 90 money is $1,818, whatever. It's listed right there.
There we go.
Is that not true?
I would assume it's true. I think the issue is that we don't get that number before the warrant closes. Backup can follow the warrant.
All right.
Follow the date of when the warrant closes.
I just wanted to amplify Mr. Monaco's comment that it's, I think it's important for us to acknowledge what that number is. Thank you.
Okay, back to Article 13. Are there any questions on it? Seeing none? Let's vote on it. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to Article 14. Article 14, Sewer Services Enterprise Fund, MWRA Assessment. It is hereby requested that the article be moved as printed in the warrant. Ways and Means?
Ways and Means voted 13-0-0 to transfer from Sewer Enterprise Fund to pay our sewer bill.
Okay.
In the amount of $5,959,999, as in the warrant.
Mr. Zabelotny?
Capitol Budget voted 7-0-0.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Seeing none? All those in favor? I guess we'll pay our bill, the MWRA. Article 15. Another one I have to read. Article 15, Inflow Infiltration, MWRA Phase 11 and 12. It is hereby requested that Article 15 be moved as follows, to see if the town will vote that the sum of $2,220,000, excuse me, $2,220,000 is hereby appropriated for the purpose of funding sewer inflow infiltration mitigation as required under an amended administrative consent order issued by the Department of Environmental Protection, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer with the approval of the Selectmen is hereby authorized to borrow $2,220,000 in pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7, Paragraph 1 of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided, however, that the amount authorized to be borrowed hereunder shall be reduced to the extent of any grants or gifts received by the town from the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority or from any other source on account of this project, to pay costs of removing sources of infiltration and inflow into the town sewer system same to be spent under the direction of the town administrator. Okay. Ways and Means?
Wasting means voted 11-0-0 to authorize the borrowing of the funds.
Capitol Budget on this one, Ernie?
Capitol Budget voted 7-0-0. I believe this is the program that we get grants and low-cost or zero-cost loans and it's appropriate to point out that this is just a return of our personal taxes to the state, to the town.
Vote of the Selectmen?
Selectmen voted 5-0-0.
Thank you. Mr. Sagorino, I think this one could use a couple minutes of, a couple words of explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a great program that the town's been engaged in for many years. The MWRA, us being a member community, provides us with available sums of money that this $2,200,000 is gonna be in the form of, 75% of that is gonna come to us in a direct grant that we don't have to pay back, and the remaining 25% is a 0% loan that we need to pay back over 10 years, and we already have the funds set aside to pay this loan back. It comes from the Sewer II fund whereby businesses who connect into the sewer system need to pay us a fee to get into, to connect their, connect into the sewer, and the funds are used to prevent inflow and infiltration, so we're trying to keep water out of the sewer system so that we're not sending clean water down to Deer Island to get treated and paying for that. So, that's the purpose of the program.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Questions on this article? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, this is a two-thirds, yes, and I'll declare it a two-thirds as it was almost unanimous. Article 16. I heard my name. Question? Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roger Bell, Precinct 6. Just as a matter of clarification for the body, and we have new members here, could, you know, we just appropriated $15,500,000 on a bond issue. Could we explain what the town rating is, how we receive the money, and for what period of time and interest we get to pay this back and how it affects the town in general?
Mr. Sagorino, can you handle that in 30 seconds or less?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The town is AAA credit rating, so that's the highest you can be. I'd like to say higher than the federal government. The repayment, the issuance of the bonds is done by bid, so we do a bid package with Brian and our financial advisor. We do a bid package, we take the best deal that we get on that day, and the repayment schedule and length of term is determined on what type of project it is. So, if we're borrowing money for police cruises, it will probably be five years. I believe when we borrow money for a building, it's 20 years. So, the repayment on the bond sort of matches what the state considers the useful, useful life of the asset. So, I think on this, the 15-5 will be... So I think on this, the 15-5 will be a 20-year repayment term.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Article 16. PEG Cable Access Enterprise Fund. It's hereby requested that Article 16 be moved as follows, to see if the town will vote, transfer the sum of $585,000 to operate the FY 2020 PEG Cable Access Enterprises, of which $585,000 will come from the FY 2020 PEG Cable Access Enterprise Fund Estimated Revenue Account. Mr. Riggs? Ways and Means?
Ways and Means voted 12-0-0 to support this. A little clarification, so this money funds BCAT, our local cable television station. The revenues come in from everybody's cable revenues on, from cable TV, from the three cable providers in town, and the revenues go into this estimated revenue account, and then all of that revenue, as voted by town meeting, is passed over to BCAT to fund their operations.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Selectmen have a vote on this article?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, we voted 5-0-0 in favor.
Thank you. Questions from the body? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 17 Water Stabilization Fund. It's hereby requested that Article 17 be moved as follows, as printed in the warrant, to see if we'll transfer money from the Water Stabilization Fund to pay our debt service to the MWRA. Ways and Means? Mr. Riggs?
Ways and Means voted 13-0-0 to support this transfer. You probably recall, in previous town meeting, we authorized the creation of this Water Stabilization Fund. Monies from water bills go into the fund and then are transferred out under authorization of town meeting to be spent on water-related projects.
This is a water stabilization?
It's a small amount this year, it's likely to grow as more money accumulates and needs to be spent.
Selectmen have a vote on this, please?
Yes, Selectmen voted 4-0-0 in favor.
Thank you. Questions from the body on this? Do we need an explanation? Are we okay? This is a two-thirds. All those in favor? Opposed? Looks unanimous, thank you. Motion passes. Article 18. School Transportation Contract. It's hereby requested that Article 18 be moved as printed in the warrant. This article is to allow the school department to enter into a five-year contract as opposed to a three-year contract for bus services. Mr. Riggs? Ways and Means?
Ways and Means, as part of our deliberations on the, the amounts that we already went into the amended operating and accommodated accounts, supported the five-year contract because it got, gets us a lower price, but we failed to take a vote on the specific item. It's probably my fault on the agenda, but we supported it in general.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Is there any questions from the body on this? Ms. Willard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, Precinct 4. I move to amend Article 18 to change the term of the contract from five years to one year. As amended, the article will read, "To see if the town will vote pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 12, to approve the school committee to enter into a one-year contract for school bus transportation or to any, or to act in any manner in relation thereto." And to support that, I just have the following points. Based on the current year authorization, the cost of the five-year contract is $13 million. Secondly, the school committee should have sought town meeting approval at least six to 10 months prior to setting the term in the RFP. The RFP was issued with a five-year term. It has, third, it has been suggested that the school committee should consider alternatives, including leasing or purchasing buses, ridership poles, bus passes, and routing and scheduling software applications. Fourth, and finally, the one-year contract ending June 30, 2020, would give the school committee adequate time to assess alternatives and, if deemed appropriate, come back to town meeting in January 2020 with a request for a five-year contract approval prior to issuing the RFP. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willard. I'm going to rule your motion out of order. The schools have a statutory right to enter into contracts up to three years, so we cannot limit them to a one-year contract. It's not, it's not within our authority. Ms. Willard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Then, in that case, I will withdraw my, my amendment and submit a second amendment, changing the, the year to a, to a three-year contract instead of one year.
He's trying to limit them to a... Sally, they're already limited to three years. They can't vote by, by law unless we pass this, this article as presented in the warrant. So if you don't want them to enter into a five-year contract, you have to vote against the warrant article. Ms. Ellis?
I'd like to, Shari Ellis, Precinct 3. I'd like to ask the school committee what their backup plan is. We already voted funding for the first year of this theoretically five-year contract that you've submitted the bid for. What is the backup plan when town meeting voted this down? What will you do?
Well, we haven't voted it down yet, Ms. Willard. I think your question is a little premature.
If this gets voted down, what is their backup plan? Well, my point being that the school committee should have come to town meeting last fall in September or in January to request us to approve them to go into a five-year contract.
Yes, I understand.
In January, they decided that they wanted to enter a five-year contract with a consultant that didn't provide any options other than this. And so there must be a backup plan because they're just assuming that we're going to vote this through with the funding being voted before it. Thank you.
Mr. Sinessi?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Adam Sinessi, Precinct 1. I just want to clarify with anyone who's willing to speak on the part of the school committee. I felt like what we heard on Monday night, I thought the reasoning behind how they arrived at the decision they, they arrived at, I was actually comfortable with the reasoning that they arrived at. However, I do want clarification as to, is there any insight as to why so few bus companies bid for the contract?
Dr. Conti?
Mr. Moderator, I, I don't know what the other companies, I don't know what they were thinking, Mr. Sinessi. I, I don't know why they didn't bid.
Is that common? So if you, I mean, you know what other communities have?
Microphone?
Is that a common practice by the bus companies or by, you know, have you, we confirmed the other night that you talked to other superintendents from surrounding communities. What have, do you have any insight as to what they've seen?
I think that when I speak to my colleagues, they don't see as much competition as they'd like to see in the transportation area, but it's one of those things that's out of our control.
Yes?
I'd like an answer to the question of what the plan would be if this is voted down.
Ms. Ellis, what would the plan be? We would have to transport the kids. I guess I would, I'm not sure about the bidding process, so that's where I'm a little bit, I don't know how to answer the question. I'm assuming if the vendor would hold a price for three years, then would ask the school committee to enter into a three-year contract, I guess. The consultant's thinking with the five-year contract is the, we would get a lower price because the contractor could depreciate the buses and his purchases over five years instead of over three, and then we would have a guaranteed increase for the following four years. So in the contract, it's a one and a half percent increase in year two, three, four, and five, so it's predictable. So the challenge was always going to be year one because we had negotiated the prior contract over five years, and so we knew there was going to be a jump in year one, but what we were looking for is the lowest jump possible, which is why they suggested giving all the contracts that they do entering into a five-year agreement to try to mitigate the cost from one contract to the next contract.
Mr. Eiler?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I should have spoken on this the other night when this came up, I apologize. John Eiler, Precinct 6, on Ways and Means School Subcommittee. So we've been to a lot of school committee meetings, to say the least. There's been a lot of suggestions about how this could have been done differently. You know, certainly there, it would have been nice, obviously, if the request for a five-year contract had been brought up earlier. Notwithstanding that, everyone was obviously disappointed there was one bidder. Everyone was obviously, and, you know, this includes the administration and school committee, was obviously disappointed that the increase was so large. Now, notwithstanding that, if we look at the reality of what came through, the bid from the one bidder, who's the incumbent, was in the bottom 10% of the 30 contracts, recent contracts that have been looked at. So even though the increase is quite large, you have to look at it compared to what? And the answer is, compared to what other schools are paying, this is still, despite the fact it's a big increase, about the best deal going. So to imagine that rebidding this will cause us to move from number 28 to number 30, which isn't a big step, is unlikely. The odds of getting a better deal because you shortened the contract from five years to three years or even one year, no one out there is going to say, "Great, it's a lot, it's a shorter term, I think I'll lower my bid." That's obviously not what people are going to do. It's a capital-intensive business, the buses need to be amortized. If there's only one year, that's guaranteed, they obviously have an amortization problem, they're going to bid higher, if anything. So I, I don't think that realistic makes sense. Mr. Gallagher suggested last time perhaps we should get into school bus business because it's so lucrative. If, if it was such a great business, there'd be a lot more bidders out there, obviously. You know, one doesn't casually get into the school bus, get into the school bus business. There is a statement that we have the, the maintenance infrastructure. Well, we do for our wreck and apartment vehicles. We probably don't have a maintenance infrastructure for 18 additional school buses which would be involved with this. We'd have to find a place to park them all. We'd have to deal with either hiring a management company or hiring all the drivers and monitors ourselves. So there's a lot of complexities getting into that business. I, I think we're a little casually glossed over that. I think realistically, as great as our town is, I don't think we want to be in the school bus business. So, so I would not advocate taking that approach. One of the other things to note is that part of the reason that everyone is so sad about the increase is because we had one of the best contracts previously. And how did we get that? It was a three-year contract that was so good that it was extended an additional two years. So if you're advocating for a shorter contract, you're sort of overlooking the fact that the reason you're complaining about the increase is because we had a good deal because we had a long contract, in fact, one that lasted five years ultimately in our, our previous contract. So, so it's a little disingenuous to say that the way to solve that is to move to a one-year contract. It just realistically is not how business is going to work. So I guess, you know, in summary, I think this is about the best deal we're going to get. I think going for a five-year contract in order to ensure that we get that deal is something that we should do. You know, Dr. Conti said the fallback plan would be, we'd hope that the current bidder would keep the price at three years. If I were the current bidder and I, and you came to me and said, "Hey, we have no other bidders and town meeting is unhappy with it," but would you keep the price if we shortened the contract? I'd say, "No, I'd, I'd like to double it since you have no other bidders." I think that's the only choice you have. So, you know, that's not going to work either realistically. So I would suggest that, that we vote yes on this. Thank you.
Mr. Monaco?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Frank Monaco, Precinct 4. Just in the spirit, I'm in an awkward position here in the spirit of full disclosure. My wife is sitting right over there, and this is one of her projects. The reason I'm going to speak right now has absolutely nothing to do with that, it's in the best interest of what I think we need to do and what we're faced with. I want to point something out. When we went and did rubbish and disposal a year ago, it's a similar, it's not the same kind of business, but we ran into exactly the same problems. There were not many bidders, the incumbent put out the best bid, we entered into a multi-year contract, and we got a whopping 17% increase right off the bat. There's something going on with these heavy equipment industries, it's local to the communities they serve. You're not going to get a bus company from Plymouth to bid on buses in Burlington. Public Works also looked, because of that problem, at bringing these kinds of operations in-house. It is, it would be very uneconomical, in my opinion, and the significant evidence based on what DPW looked at just for trash to bring in that kind of equipment and service it. So all the things that Mr. Eiler pointed out, I think are very real. You cannot be casual about it if you want to get into that. Plus, he didn't mention insurance, and there's a major insurance component to the vehicles and to the ridership of school buses. So the school bus transport problem unfortunately is expensive, and the prices are going up. Operators alone, because of the low employment situation, these are all heavy equipment, CDL operators that are licensed, and they're compensated pretty much at very competitive wages, and there's law that's around that. So I think it's unlikely we're going to do a whole lot better, maybe we could, and if you want to rebid it, we could rebid it, we'd have to call a special town meeting and we'll take what we take. Going to was shot a contract, just like the rubbish disposal. The incumbent won it, he had a multi-year contract, and nobody could touch it. And I think the same thing is going on here, and so I, as much as you're unhappy about And so I, as much as you're unhappy about it, A, process, yeah, they probably should have gotten the five-year approval upfront. B, the price, it's sticker shock, and I agree, but I really think, if anything, we're going to make it worse if we're not careful. Thank you.
Ms. Nash.
Mildred Nash, Precinct Three. Frank Monaco, who always has wise words to say, did mention a special town meeting, and that is, of course, the answer to Sherry's question, that they could come back, and they could come back with, we still have the possibility of a five-year contract, or we could see what happens investigating the business of three. What really sticks in my craw, and it didn't happen until Monday's town meeting, was when I heard that in addition to voting the $40,000, which we lavish on the B-line yearly, $40,000 for the B-line, which goes year-round, starts in the morning and goes till six in the evening, and is there, or not there, as the case may be, for the people who are most in need of transportation and do not get it. And then I stopped, I don't know why I didn't think of it on Monday, and I thought, "We got this five-year contract after we hired a special consultant," and I can't remember what we paid for it, but it was probably close to the entire B-line budget. And I read in the daily paper that we hired this consultant to help with the existing, the new contract process. And then it tells us what we managed with the new contract. We got a contract which includes family and medical leave, insurance for the bus drivers, and off-time training, and are all part of the five-year contract. I think with a consultant like that, we maybe could make up our own minds and have saved the consultant's money, because as so often happens, it's big bucks spent with very little return. And so I think that there is a case to be made for voting this down and having the school committee do what the bylaw committee is, which is scuttling about, to see if they can't come up with something better. The one flaw I saw in the Ways and Means presentation was that we extended the present expiring three-year contract to five years because it was a long, good contract. And what do we get now? Is a long, bad contract compared to what we had. So I can see that if we vote this down, it isn't as if there's no plan. They could come back and possibly get something better because maybe the bus company might say, "We are worth keeping," and maybe they could give a little, and we could get a better, better thing, because what we have right now isn't good. And meanwhile, to hear that in one year the B-line's going to be gone, I mentioned this to the school committee people in January after they had hired the consultant on the cocky mammy theory that perhaps they could say, a consultant would find a way that we could incorporate B-line in school in a way that would work for both. But it doesn't seem as if this consultant did anything that we couldn't have done very easily without them. Thank you.
Dr. Conti.
Mr. Moderator, just, I guess, some factual information. The consultant was $5,000, and that was for taking us through the bid process, writing the design, and also doing an efficiency study for us in terms of the bus usage and routes. And the consultant did not write in the employee benefits into the RFP that is state-mandated, and so we have to follow prevailing wage, so those are state requirements. So the paid leave, the, what is it, sick time, there's minimum wage, those are all state requirements. They're not anything that was added or a luxury, again, it's a requirement that the state has us do.
Thank you, Dr. Conti. Mr. Glantz.
Thank you, Nolan Glantz, Precinct One. I think I'm a little surprised that we're debating this so heavily about, and the real question here is whether to allow five years or make them limited to the current law, which is three years. And it's just basic business sense, if we make the bidder shorten the contract to three years, they're going to charge more per year. It's just basic economics. And the reason, again, it feels like it's a bad deal or more expensive, is because we locked in a low rate five years ago. The economy has moved up, we got the benefit of that locked-in rate, and now the economy's moved up, we have to pay the current rate. The benefit of going five instead of three is, we get this new rate that's better at five than it would be at three, and we get to lock it in for longer, so we don't have the next jump until further in the future. It's just basic economics, I don't know why it's such a hard question. I'm definitely in favor of this.
Sickler. And let's keep it to the distinction between a three and a five-year contract, we're kind of getting far afield.
Eileen Sickler, Precinct Four. As Mr. Eiler said, he thinks, you know, it would be better. I think the rub is the timing. I mean, because, I mean, this has been known for years that it was coming due. And the prior contract was a very good one, it was about $5 million, $6 million, so now it's 13. And I know there's a few more benefits and a few additional things, but still 13, so it's doubled. And there was no analysis done. I mean, in business, you, for $13 million, you provide three options, two options, four options, and then describe, you know, the option you've, you think is best, and why. And I guess, again, for that kind of money, I would have expected that, and we didn't get that. So that's, it's more of a disappointment.
Are there any more comments about three years versus five years? Mr. Murphy?
Not really.
Honesty is appreciated. There's no further questions, I see out there. So there being no further questions, are there? Who? Oh, Mr. Nebalotny.
The...
Mr. Nebalotny, name and precinct, please.
Ernie Nebalotny, Precinct Five, still. The issue of looking at alternatives, even at contract length, is something that is going to take a lot longer between now and when you need the bus service in the fall. To do a thorough evaluation of cost of all the options and alternatives, including contract length, is not a simple task, and I think you're basically tied to what's available today, and you're not likely to do better on the three-year contract than the five-year contract, especially if you've got only one bidder. My suggestion is that the time to make sure that you avoid a doubling in the contract is about now for the next contract, not this one.
Any further questions? Seeing none. We'll put this to a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Article 19. It's a revaluation contract renewal under the, at the request of the Board of Assessors. It is hereby requested that Article 19 be moved as is printed in the warrant. Mr. Riggs, Ways and Means.
Ways and Means voted 12-0-0 to support a nine-year contract for the Board of Assessors to engage in the reeval, property reevaluation. And I think probably the assessor can do a better job of explaining why that's a really benefit, much more beneficial situation than today, but otherwise.
Yeah, Jim, you want to make a presentation on this?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So basically, this is a revaluation contract that helps us, assists us in doing our annual valuation of all the property in the community. In the past nine years, we operated under a previous similar engagement as this, with the exception, you may recall, two years ago at town meeting, you authorized us to reorganize our department. In doing so, we reduced one clerical staff and we reactivated a data collection position. That position will basically do a lot of the labor, intensive-type work, going out to your houses, as many of our residents have experienced in, and obliged us, which we appreciate, because obviously you're appropriating the money for the services, so we want to make sure we're getting the bang for the buck. It helps us keep equity in our assessment program, and it keeps consistency in the data so that the information's updated, and you don't have to have a huge expenditure in a single year to go out and do that, like some communities do. So essentially, this contract is approximately $40,000 less than it had been previously on an annual basis in the past. If you have any questions, Mr. Moderator, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Questions from the body? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd just like to thank you on behalf of the Board of Assessors.
Article 20. To establish receipts reserved account for ambulance services. It is hereby requested that Article 20 be moved as printed in the warrant. Ways and Means, Mr. Riggs.
Ways and Means voted 12-0-1 to create this account.
Selectmen. That was a 4-0-0. Mr. Sagorino, could you explain what this is?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We'll be informing the body later. I know that everybody is aware that we've been working to bring the fire department to a paramedic service level, and we've come to, come to an agreement with the union, which you'll be taking up a little bit later on. This fund, similar to the water stabilization fund, is intended to collect the new revenues that we will be receiving for the ambulance service, set it aside so that we can offset future ambulance costs in the fire department. So the ambulance funds that we receive will come into this fund, and then we'll be coming to town meeting to ask you to appropriate those funds out when we present the fire budget to offset increased costs for paramedic service.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Questions from the body? I guess you did a good job, no questions. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Article 21. Economic Development Director. It is hereby requested that Article 21 be moved as follows, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $85,000 for the purpose of funding an economic development director, same to be spent under the direction of the town administrator, and further to amend the Town of Burlington Administrative and Professional Classification Plan to add said position. Mr. Riggs.
Ways and Means had quite a bit of discussion about this. We voted seven in favor, three opposed, zero abstentions.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Mr. Sagorino, I assume you'll, you want something to say about it? Oops, selectmen vote. Here we go. You're filling the time, Nick, come on.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Selectmen voted 5-0-0 in favor, undertaking the importance of a role such as this.
Thank you. Mr. Sagorino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This was an important topic with a lot of information, so to ensure that you were able to get all the information, given this is my first town meeting speaking in front of you, we did it in a little video presentation style, and we'll take some questions after. It's only slightly more boring than me speaking to you in public, like I am right now, so I appreciate your patience.
...about the Economic Development Director. Good evening, and welcome to tonight's presentation about the Economic Development Director. Many years ago, when I was in school, I had a teacher that frequently scolded me by saying, "Mr. Sagorino, you need to learn how to enunciate your words." Years later, when I decided to look that word up in the dictionary to find out what it meant, I have to tell you that I agree with that teacher. So in an effort to focus on enunciating my words and to provide you with complete and coherent information, we decided to do this presentation in this format. So let's begin. The current status of Burlington's commercial sector. I think everybody would probably agree that Burlington has a thriving commercial sector and has been one for many years. We are the envy of communities all over the state. As a community, we were always ahead of the curve, and residents back in the 1950s identified the opportunity presented when Route 128 was brought to town. In more recent years, the town utilized the PDD as a development tool, and redevelopments such as Third Ave and the district have sustained our growth for the past decade. Burlington was also quick to realize that companies want amenities and worked to transform the business district from more than just a place to work and shop, but also a place to play and eat. These two charts clearly demonstrate the success of our commercial sector. As a reminder, commercial values make up approximately one-third of our total value, yet pick up two-thirds of our total tax levy. In simpler terms, what this means is that we're able to spend on services like Lexington does and tax like Woburn does. However, life is difficult at the top, and success is difficult to maintain. If you don't believe me, then you can ask these two guys. What does a vibrant business community bring to us? Simply put, and no other way to say it, but a vibrant business community translates into vibrant services provided to the residents. And here in Burlington, a vibrant business community lessens the burden on residential taxpayers. As you can see from these charts, we have the second-lowest average single-family tax bill in the group. Yet the next chart shows that we are third-highest in expenditures per capita, and for us, expenditures mean services. In addition, having all these businesses in the community results in amazing levels of corporate sponsorship and philanthropy and support of local nonprofits and civic events. Herb Chambers sponsors fireworks, Keurig sponsors the Fourth of July, Millipore sponsors the COA and School Department, Oracle provides us with grants for public safety, and Leahy helps out just about everywhere, most recently with the outdoor fitness center at TRW Field. I couldn't possibly name them all. Lastly, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that having these amenities within our town provides residents with the ability to enjoy first-class dining, shopping, and entertainment options that they would otherwise need to travel to Boston for. However, we still face financial challenges. A word I probably use too frequently when someone asks me about Burlington is fortunate, and I remind myself how fortunate we are on a daily basis. But like all communities, we still face financial challenges. We have an aging infrastructure, and we'll need to continue to invest in this going forward. We have long-term liabilities for pension and OPEB, and the cost of our services continually outpace our available revenues. So what is our competition doing? This is actual footage... This is actual footage taken at a Middlesex III meeting of other communities pursuing our businesses. Just kidding, it's actually a scene from Game of Thrones, but the fact remains that our competition to attract and retain businesses has grown dramatically. Communities that previously took pride in being strictly residential have figured out the benefits of having business in their town to spread the tax burden. In researching this initiative, we met with economic development professionals in neighboring communities. They took great pride in letting us know that their intention is to make their community more like Burlington, and that to do so, they would be happy to take from us. They also thank us for our work in creating an amenity-rich environment, which they now use as a selling point for their communities as being a half-mile down the road or two exits away from everything we have to offer. What's different in the business landscape? So what is different? What has changed, you might be thinking? Burlington has always been able to retain and attract good businesses. Perhaps the most important thing that I've learned through this process, and the one thing that I hope everybody understands, is this: Businesses want predictability. Predictability is what is lacking most in our process. That is nobody's fault; that is a function of being a town government in Massachusetts in the way that we are required to operate. However, businesses are increasingly unwilling to invest time and resources in a process with an uncertain timeline and an unpredictable ending. During our research, it was suggested to us that we'll never know how many companies kicked the tires here and moved on, because their project required either a lengthy process through an elected board or an uncertain ending here at town meeting. Time and unpredictability kill development deals. Another element that's different is that town borders matter less than they used to. We are only about fifteen miles or so from the center of Boston. If we were in Philadelphia or most other major cities, and you went fifteen miles outside of downtown, you know where you'd be? You'd still be in Philadelphia. So outside of this region, everybody looks at us not as Lexington, Waltham, or Burlington, but just as Boston. A company wants to open an office in Boston, and to them, Boston could be Braintree, Danvers, or Burlington. The individual borders that we as natives use to define ourselves are much less important once you leave this area. Projects used to be financed locally. Now many projects are financed by giant, faceless, real estate investment trusts that only care about timelines, deadlines, and return on investment. In many cases, they are unwilling to take a risk on an unpredictable ending and will move on to a deal with less uncertainty. In summary, to compete in the future, we need to proactively have the zoning and other conditions in place to attract and retain the types of businesses and industries which we want to have in town. How does the economic development director position help? We envision that the economic development director will become the primary point of contact in the face of the town to the business community. They will work with existing businesses within the town to understand their needs and to retain them within the town. The position will develop strong working relationships with department heads, elected and appointed officials, and the community at large to gain an understanding of what type of businesses that we want to have in town. The economic development director will function as a quarterback to prospective businesses by providing a roadmap for those businesses to navigate the town's permitting processes through planning, conservation, Board of Health, ZBA, and the Board of Selectmen, and to also work alongside our department heads to identify and troubleshoot issues in advance. We anticipate that this coordination will keep all parties fully informed, prepared, and operating efficiently as possible. Sometimes, that may even include quickly telling a prospective business a quick no. "I'm sorry, we won't be able to accommodate that project on that site." The economic development director will immerse themselves in market trends to identify the conditions and zoning that we need to proactively implement before a company looks to locate here. One target market is the industries that are aligned with our biggest businesses, Leahy, Northeastern, and Millipore. These three industry leaders will continue to serve as a catalyst to generate additional interest in our community. The economic development director will represent the town at the chamber, trade shows, Middlesex III Coalition, and with the development community at large. But this isn't just about big business. It's also about understanding and creating the conditions under which small and locally-owned businesses can thrive, succeed, and prosper. To that end, we also wish to have the economic development director focus some efforts on the town center. Amazing work was done years ago by the Town Center 3A Subcommittee to create zoning in line with the residents' vision for what we want the center to be. It's a long-term initiative, and significant investment has occurred. But what we found is that other communities put continuous effort to find ways to make their town center districts more vibrant. Some great examples of what other communities have done to give residents a reason to linger in their town centers are by promoting pop-up events, arts and culture, and tot lots. An example that comes to mind is working with a landlord to allow us to utilize a vacant storefront for a temporary community art gallery where local artists can display their The proposed position: This is not a new idea; it's been kicked around for years. The town has undertaken studies and created plans. Now we need the boots on the ground to put the plans into action. Best way to do that is to have a dedicated and knowledgeable employee who can focus their efforts on bringing these ideas to life and these plans to fruition. This body appropriated over two-hundred thousand dollars several years ago for the master plan. I'd like to point out that thousands of hours of time and effort was put into that by staff, residents, elected officials, and others to map out the plans for the town's future. Two of the eight sections of this report deal with economic development in the town center. I'd submit to you that this is significant evidence that these are areas that we need to focus on in the upcoming years. We have planned the work, and now it is time for us to work the plan. This position will report to the town administrator. That will allow for all of our existing boards and committees to maintain their independence and have the opportunity to review and comment with any ideas that are brought forward. And as is the case now, all zoning changes still come to town meeting for a final decision. This position is requested at a Group 15 in the AMP plan. This group contains other similar-type positions, such as planning director, building commissioner, public health director, and library director. This range of pay would give us the ability to attract an up-and-coming person in the field or to recruit a seasoned person from another community. To summarize, thank you very much for listening. I know that was a lot of information to process, so I'd like to summarize a couple of key points. First, we think the town center has great potential for the future. It will take some time, but I think we should continue to put in the effort. Second, the economic development director will become the face of the town to the business community and will work alongside our existing staff to help coordinate the process and gain efficiencies. Third, and this is very important, businesses need predictability. If there's a long board approval process or a town meeting vote, they are moving on to the next community. We heard it repeatedly when we were researching this, and it was brought up at the Biotech Forum last January. We will never know how many companies passed on us because we weren't ready to accommodate them. Lastly, and also very important, this initiative is intended to maintain what we have. A resident asked me, "Why would we want to allocate these funds toward business and not residents?" The truth is, this position ultimately benefits residents as much, if not more so, the businesses. Remember that commercial sector makes up one-third of the value within the town, yet pays two-thirds of the taxes. Our goal is to maintain commercial at one-third so that we can continue to provide an excellent level of services and mitigate property tax increases for the residents. That concludes our presentation. I couldn't possibly thank all of the people who contributed to this individually, but I'd like to at least attempt to get as many as possible: Board of Selectmen, fellow department heads, elected officials, residents, and members of the business community. I'd also like to give a special thanks to John and Whitney, as they participated in this with me every step of the way. Thank you very much.
Don't get a swelled head, Mr. Sagorino. Applause twice in one town meeting. Okay, we've heard the votes of the committees. Questions from the body? Mr. Miller.
I'm Dave Miller, Precinct 4. The one concern I have about this is about the impact on our internal infrastructure. And what I mean by that is, let's assume for argument's sake that hiring this person is the right thing to do. This person comes on board and is very successful, where the measure of success is he's helped retain current businesses, he's helped them expand, maybe, he's attracted new businesses. To me, that all translates into a lot more new development as well as redevelopment. And I'm wondering what the impact on our current, like, planning board, building department, et cetera. I've had a lot of interaction with the planning department and building department over the past three years, much to their chagrin, they'll probably say. And my sense is that they're currently overloaded with all the development that's going in. And so when this person comes on board, I see, I won't even leave the Board of Health, Conservation Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals. We had Dr. Weiner here on Monday talking about all the inspections they do currently, and this is certainly going to increase their workload. So does this sort of have to be a package deal if we bring this person on? Do we need to beef up resources in our town infrastructure, our town departments, et cetera?
Mr. Sagorino.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Miller, we hadn't considered that. I believe it's a standalone position. Clearly, all of our boards and commissions have a very, very heavy workload, in particular compared to other communities. I think redevelopment is the key, and I think I see this position, hopefully, to alleviate some workload of those departments by being able to coordinate, to be able to work alongside them proactively in order to determine, troubleshoot problems before they come up. So I'm hopeful that the position would help make boards and commissions' jobs just a little bit easier.
I guess from what I see, if lots of new building applications come in, that's going to just swamp the building and planning departments.
I think they're swamped already.
And they're currently hard to get out of reactive mode, and I think this might put them in even more reactive mode. It'll be hard to catch up unless they get more resources assigned to them. That's my two cents.
Thank you.
Mr. Priest, do you have a comment to add?
I just want to add one thing real quick, because I completely understand your concern. This is something the board had talked about. I think we see this more as a curation. The role isn't just to flood the town full of new everything. It's to evaluate the town and look at the big picture and help bring in businesses that we see as a good fit to the community, and not just to go yep, 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 and just let them all come in.
Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dave Webb, Precinct 7. I believe there were some dissenting votes on the Ways and Means. Could we maybe have a summary of what the thinking was there?
Sure. So there was quite a bit of concern about, well, so there was a sort of a review of the progress and the success of Burlington currently in, you know, the number, I don't have the numbers off time, the millions of dollars that we've gained in building permits, the total number of value added to the town's property rolls, and the concept there being that we've been doing okay without one. In fact, we've been doing great without an economic development director. There are also concerns that, you know, it's a full-time position with benefits, and, you know, if it doesn't work out, it's hard to get rid of life employees in town. These are not my opinions, but they were voiced. Those are probably the major points, that it didn't seem essential to the people who dissented.
Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Rick Parker, Precinct 7. First of all, I want to thank Whitney, probably, for putting this package together that we all got on the first night. I'm very good at looking at numbers, but I'm much better with pictures. I think the question here is to ask, what's the cost of doing nothing? That's something that we haven't addressed. I am as fond of this town as I think anybody here. We think that Burlington, because it's Burlington, they'll want to be here. All of the other towns look at this. They don't want to be Burlington, but they want our commercial tax base. So how do they go about that? Mr. Sagorino mentioned Middlesex III Coalition, which is a union of ten towns up and down the Route 3 corridor that focus on attracting businesses to the region. So once they attract them to the region, what happens? And it wasn't quite like it was demonstrated there in Game of Thrones, but honestly, it's not far off from that. I represent the Burlington area Chamber of Commerce. I am at all of the Middlesex III meetings. I think it's very important that we attract companies to the region. That's a difficult thing to do. We've already got gold here, and it's easier to poach gold than it is to bring other companies out of the area to the region. The cost of doing business in this region is high. The thirst for employees is high. The cost of transportation is high. The cost of energy is high. It's a lot easier to try to reach out into another community and take away their commercial businesses. So you look at this chart. Who's the big dog on the chart right now with the commercial tax base? Where is it? It's right here in Burlington. What does it take for us to attract someone to a town next door? Maybe it's a TIF, a promise of a TIF, that there are actively businesses listed right next door to us attracting these companies with TIFs. They're also saying, "You can get to all the amenities in Burlington and still be in a lower commercial tax base." These are businesses that hire our citizens, that pay to the commercial tax base, and we take this for granted. And by the time it starts slipping, it's way too late. So the cost of doing nothing is really drastic. I think people will say, "Well, we haven't seen it yet. We've done it all without any effort." It's not been without any effort. The planning board, the planning department, town administrator, the Chamber of Commerce, the businesses here that try to attract other companies and get companies like Millipore to come to Burlington, to get the research center that we have in Northeast and here, to have these companies backfill into the community right now is very important to diversify what we have here. We're very high in software and healthcare now. The future is moving in different directions, and we have to be able to take those smaller companies and bring them here and let them grow here. There is a thirst for employees. The reason that Burlington is so hot is the amenities are here, the employees are driving the bus. So whatever the companies have to do to attract them, they'll do it. The educational institutions, we find ourselves located between Boston and Lowell. We have a great education system here, and in fact, in about a week or so, you're going to see scholarships given out to Burlington High School graduates, probably going to be somewhere around four-hundred thousand dollars. Do you know where that comes from? From the businesses that are here? And I hear the worry about development. It's redevelopment. It's keeping these businesses here. It's giving them the amenities. We've done it with the amenities. But if the businesses go away and slide away, then the amenities will go with them. The tax base that we have from the commercial tax base here is not to be taken for granted. These other companies around here are hiring economic developers. Why? Because they've got, the gold is right here. And if we don't do something to compete with these other towns that are around us, we will find ourselves slipping backwards. And that's not a case that we're looking forward to. We put a lot of money, that went out here today, and I'll tell you, sixty percent of it came from the businesses. We need to... We need to embrace the companies that are here and get those companies that want to locate to locate within the town's borders. They don't care if they go to Lexington, Billerica, Bedford, these other towns, I will tell you, they have worse traffic than us. You have a choice right now. You're going to have traffic. Do you want to be the cut-through, or do you want to be the destination? The cut-through has traffic and it ruins their roads. The destination is the commercial tax base. Do not take this lightly. That money that we get from the commercial tax base will not always be there if we don't get ahead of this. And I think, I would ask you to support this position. I think it's critical to the town.
Mr. Maury.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bruce Maury, Precinct 1. Question for Paul. I believe, overall, I'm in support of this. I'm all for the streamlining and getting to my further, to my colleague, town meeting colleague, Rick, comments on focusing and attracting and keeping the business. I do see some overlap, again, I see some overlap in this position with the planning director's position. Help me out and educate me on how these will be delineate, what the delineations are of these two positions, and additionally, what this position will be separate and unique from what Kristin, I'm sure she does a lot of other things too, but some of these things are part of what she did historically, and maybe it's a separation of those. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would say the best example of what I think the position could do is what Kristin did with the biotech initiative. She did an unbelievable job on that, but I think that the planning board did an outstanding job on that as well. But I think that even they would agree that the only thing missing from that is we probably should have done it several years ago. So, I think having another person dedicated to this task who can work alongside Kristin and the other land use departments, I think, is where the benefit will come in. It's certainly not going to prohibit the planning board from bringing forth an initiative, and of course, again, I think it's important that the planning board maintain its independence because they may not like an economic development idea, and we want them to have the ability to say, hey, we don't think that's a great idea, as they can now. So, ultimately, you know, any zoning changes will always come to town meetings. So, that's probably the best example of how I can see the position helping, is to have that ability to spend the time to think of what type of zoning a company needs that we would want to attract, and be able to sort of work with Kristin, work with the building department, get everything figured out in advance, so that when companies start looking, we'll already be ready to accept them.
Ms. Willard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Sally Willard, Precinct 4. I think this is an excellent idea. I've thought that we needed something like this for a long time. I think to have someone who businesses can call, a specific point person who may say, well, gosh, we really don't want that type of business here because it just won't, it just won't fly among all of our boards, or someone who can keep an eye out for what commercial properties might be good prospects for redevelopment, say, over in the A, B, and C Street, or wherever, wherever it is. I think this is an excellent idea, and I fully support this. Thank you.
Mr. DiTucci.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dan DiTucci, Precinct 6. I did a little bit of research on this myself, talked to some of the surrounding communities, some of the commercial property owners that we have in town, but I was on the fence with this. But my mind was changed after talking to our planning director, who I have a high regard for, Kristin Kastner, and actually asked her to come tonight and just to speak a little bit about the position, not to be talking about approval for any board or anything, but just her experience, and to help us know a little bit about the position, because I learned a lot by listening to her. So, Mr. Moderator, if it's okay and point of order, can Kristin come up and speak?
Ms. Kastner, would you care to elucidate?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and members of town meeting. So, to the question, that question as well as the initial, the question before this about, I think there is going to be a lot of overlap for what I have been doing over the 16 and 1/2 years I've been with you guys. But to the point that, you know, I looked at the schedule today and looking at the summer and looking at planning board schedules, and we actually said in the office today, I think we might have another 1:30 a.m. July meeting, just because we have so much going on. So, there's a lot of efforts that we want to bring forward, especially in a time where, as all of you know, things are changing, people are working differently. Life science has a whole, I mean, there, yes, people work in offices, but there's all these different types of diversity of spaces that we simply don't have in Burlington. I mean, we want to attract businesses to come here to continue filling up our office spaces, but our office spaces are Class A and B office spaces of cubicles, and it's great if there's those type of companies, but we don't have the diversity of spaces that could be built in our surrounding communities or that already exist in our surrounding communities. So, I mean, these are the challenges that we face. At the same time, as was bullet in the slide, that we have a ton of money coming into Burlington and capital investment from people from California, Oklahoma, even out of the United States, backing a lot of the decisions and capital to do a lot of the projects. And they don't know what, where Burlington is, who, that it's a town of, you know, a small 25,000, 25, almost 26,000 residents, and then a booming commercial community. But, so, I think for us to explain our identity in Burlington and our needs and give that face of Burlington, I mean, in the past, we've been really lucky with Norbloom and Gutierrez, and they've been doing a lot of development, and companies before that, and it's really been their development for the town. Now, they have to answer increasingly more to all these capital partners. So, I think it's important for Burlington to have a voice on our own in economic development, to speak with the business community, and to really bring the ideas of the Board of Selectmen, the planning board, the residents, the master plan, and say, is this a good idea? Is this a bad idea? If it's a good idea, how are we going to do it, and how are we going to navigate through all these boards? And if, you know, this is a great company and it doesn't fit with what we have here, how do we make those changes and suggest those changes? So, I think in a view, and I speak as myself, but not as the planning board, but I think the planning board in general would support, you know, all of these initiatives, being able to move more quickly to really get us to the place we need to be to sustain and stabilize our tax base in the future. So, overall, I'm supportive, and I see this role as a critical role moving forward, to tie the departments together in terms of the process of permitting, to work with the business community and our regional partners, and work with our existing property owners and new companies coming in, and, you know, as mentioned, the life science initiative of companies that are moving out of Kendall Square. I mean, we want to be the place that, if you're a company of three people and you want to be 15 people, you can come here. But then when you're 15 people and you're going to be 100 people, you can stay here. I mean, that's the story of desktop metal, and they've been booming. And we, you know, hopefully, they'll move into maybe a new building that could be built in Northwest Park. But that's the story, that we want to be able to capture that lifecycle and offer the diversity of space. And this position is critically needed, just based on this amount of activity going on right now, that I don't think the planning board, the building department, any of our departments individually, without help in the navigation, could do it individually. So, I think, as proposed, that this position is going to be of huge assistance to really making, you know, everything that we want happen. So, thank you.
Mr. Parsons.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ed Parsons, Precinct 6. And I just want to say, at a high level, I think that there are a few things that an economic development director could do. And the first and most basic is just to facilitate communication among potential new businesses and the various committees, departments, and boards that they have to deal with. And then the second is to set a strategy for the town development, and the third is to actively market and attract companies. And I think that Kristin gave a good overview of those kind of high-level functions. I'll just give an anecdote to support the nuts and bolts of that. I sit on the zoning bylaw review committee, and we've spent our first year mapping out the various stakeholders, boards, departments that are governed by the zoning bylaws. And if I can answer Mr. Miller's concern, I think that we're not going to add burden, but relieve burden, because they have so little time to deal with all of the things that they have to deal with now. One thing that we considered helping to coordinate is the process of permitting and navigating that process, and we were shown by the building department some helpful handouts that they have available to help people through the permitting process when they come in, if they're unfamiliar with it. And what they have are several mimeographed sheets, the originals of which were typed with a manual typewriter. They are dated, they are barely younger than I am. And I don't say that to criticize, I say that just to point out that no one's had the time to update that. And so, that greatly restricts the scope of people, new businesses, agents that can come in and get anything done, because you have to be very familiar with the process to begin with. So, if you can help facilitate that in any way, I think we're easily getting $85,000 worth just on that facilitation function. And then if we can take a little, a little pressure off of Kristin, that would be fantastic. I'm grateful for the quick emails I get from her. She's very helpful, but I know that she's, you know, spread very thin in setting the strategy for planning. So, I see the need, and I think it would be of great benefit, and it would add efficiency for all the bodies that are working on this currently. So, I support it, wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Nolan Glance, Precinct 1. I'm generally in favor of this. I think it's a good idea. A question I have is why this is a warrant article and not part of the administrators' department budget? Is it because of the adding it as a new role in the administration plan? The funding for that is under this article, and that's for the first year, then it rolls into the budget for next year? Is that how it works? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Van Camp.
Hi, excuse me, Dave Van Camp, Precinct 7. I've heard a lot of the benefits here, and I fully understand the role of commercial citizens of this town, and I get all of that. But the one thing I haven't heard at all in any of this presentation is how are we going to deal with them to mitigate the cost of development? That's one thing we haven't talked about, about the burden on the neighborhoods. One thing that jumped out at me in the backup to this was the term, the targeted areas of Burlington. I live in Precinct 7. I'm your target. They're going past my front door to get to the district. There's 1,000 trips a week down my street that's barely wide enough to be legal. I can't get the DPW to come down to take a look at the road. I can't get the police to come down to enforce the traffic laws. So, here are all the benefits that we're supposed to be getting, but I'm not seeing any of them. Now, I'm hoping that this position might give us a way to deal with that, but I haven't heard anything. So, Mr. Sagorino, can you tell me, what's your vision for this, to deal with the neighborhoods, to help us out? I get the benefits of the businesses, but how about for the people?
Mr. Sagorino, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The only thing I could add to that is I think that all of our boards do as good a job as they possibly can in protecting neighborhoods as these developments come through. I watch all the meetings, and I think there are a lot of contributions, sidewalks, streetlights, and things of that nature. I certainly understand your circumstances, and again, I think somebody already brought it up about traffic. But again, that's always part of the package when a business comes to town, is when looking at the site, the planning board looks at things that could be corrected in that area, and that is typically part of, part of the approval process. So, I'm hopeful that we'll have, you know, someone to focus on that and be able to identify what the neighborhood concerns would be, again, in advance by knowing the community, and hopefully be able to mitigate things from the beginning.
Ms. Damiani.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Lucy Damiani, Precinct 3. I'm certainly in favor of the concept of this. I just have a couple of questions relative to the salary. Is that assumed to be a baseline starting salary for the first 12 months? Or how will that salary be negotiated, number one? And secondly, what would be the desired educational and experience qualifications of a candidate?
Mr. Sagorino, please.
The amount that we, the pay range on the grade 15, I believe, starts at 80 and goes to about 104. So, I think within that range, we could probably attract somebody at the beginning, at the beginning, who's maybe earlier into their career, or perhaps at the higher end of that range, we could attract somebody from another community. I think the amount that we have here is reflective of the fact that we, unlikely that we're going to hire somebody on July 1st, so it's a, would probably end up being a partial year, once we determine the person's qualifications. Throughout the process, when we were researching this, we asked folks what type of background might be successful in this position. The number one was a planning-type background, but there were other suggestions. People that work in the development community or the construction industry might also be good candidates for this, or somebody that does commercial financing. So, there were a couple of pools where we were sort of directed to look, look, look at, but planning was one of the top ones that came back as a suggested background for this position.
Mr. Rossi.
Gene Rossi, Precinct 2. In reading this brochure, and I'm glad Mr. Sagorino mentioned our OPEB liability in that presentation. Now, I don't know how many employees we've hired since Monday night, it's unclear, on the school side. And I don't think Burlington has a problem attracting or retaining businesses, and I don't think our roads can handle it right now. So, if this wants to, if you want to continue with this, I suggest you take the third option presented to us, and that's to form a committee or a commission. Thank you.
Mr. Connors. Question has been moved. Not debatable. All those in favor of moving the question? All those opposed? The question has been moved.
It requires two-thirds of the moderator.
It's a clear through two-thirds. Mr. Frost.
If we have it standing down now? One, five, six. Why not have a six?
If seven people stand up and ask for it.
It's just one.
Is it just one?
Five, six, seven.
We can have a standing count. Mr. Curtin, I know you wanted to come here for, wanted to have something to do tonight.
Absolutely.
Mr. Connors, you have a question? Okay, all those in favor? Please stand. Thank you. All those opposed, please stand. There being 67 in favor, 13 opposed. It's a clear 2/3s majority. Now, let's go to the question. All those in favor of Article 21, please? All those opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. It's only quarter of.
But we got some easy ones. Well, maybe not.
All right, the motion has been made to adjourn. I can't debate that one. I was all in favor of adjourned. Opposed? We'd be adjourned. See you Monday, 7:30. Special town meeting. Read your packet.